Welcome, and I call the meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you, planning commissioners and the public for the participation today. My name is David Weiner. I am the Chair of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission, and welcome you to the January 13th, 2021 Virtual Planning Commission Hearing. I call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is being conducted electronically in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2, Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413, and the city's continuity of government ordinance adopted September 15th, 2020, and Chapter 1228 of the 2020 Acts of Assembly as amended. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted within 10 days on the Planning Commission website. Today, Commissioner Barnes will not be in attendance today, but everybody else is here. I've asked staff to describe the order of business and the rules of today's meeting. Mrs. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties participating. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. The consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. The regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Speakers who are participating virtually today, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing and reverberation. Please note that once your name is called, you should wait three seconds before speaking to ensure the Planning Commission hears your complete remarks. Please begin your comments by identifying yourself. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the planning, to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to be approved or disapproved in application will be made by the City Council. The commission thanks you for your participation, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. Today, the first order of business is the consideration, the request to withdraw or defer an item. Wall?
There are 11 items to request for deferral. First, that is item number three requesting for a 30-day deferral for the February 10th Planning Commission meeting, and Agenda items 28 through 37 are requesting for indefinitely deferral.
Thank you.
The first item, sorry.
Just get a motion for that. Do I have a motion to defer these items, please?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we defer Agenda items number three for 30 days and Agenda items number 28 through 37 indefinitely.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Wall and a second by Commissioner Klein. Call for the vote, please.
If you are in favor of the, if you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you are opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Enman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wall?
Yes.
And Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By a recorded vote of 10, 4, and 0 against, Agenda items number three has been deferred for 30 days, and items 28 through 37 have been requesting an indefinite deferral.
All right, the next item to be considered is the withdrawal item. There is one item for the withdrawal, and that is Agenda item number two.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for withdrawal of item number two, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we withdraw Agenda item number two.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Wall and a second by Commissioner Horstley. Let's vote.
Okay. If you are in favor of a motion, say yes, and if you are opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaraz, could you say that again? Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Enman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
And Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By a recorded vote of 10, 4, and 0 against, Agenda item two has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the consent agenda, which the vice chair will take over.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. Application number one, four, five, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 19, and 20 with an omitted condition or within an added condition concerning forced buffer. The Planning Condition, Planning Commission also places the following applications for conditional use permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda as they meet the applicable requirements for Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance. Staff in the Planning Commission supports the applications, and there are no speakers signed up to comment. These include Agenda items number 21, 23, 25, 26, and 27.
Thank you, Commissioner Wall. Can I get a motion to approve the items on consent, please?
I make a motion that these items be approved by consent.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Fine, okay. I got approval by Commissioner Wall and a second by Ms. Klein. Ready for vote?
If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you are opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Ms., Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Enman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
And Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By a recorded vote of 10, 4, and 0 against, Agenda items 1, 4, 5, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 19, 20, with the added condition for the 20-foot buffer, 21, 23, 25, 26, and 27 have been approved on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. For those of you who had items on the consent agenda, the staff will get up with you when they will be forwarded to council here shortly. Thank you for being on the consent agenda, and next will be the regular agenda.
Mr. Chair, we have seven items on today's regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is item six, the application of Janice Hart for a conditional use permit for a home-based wildlife rehabilitation facility located at 1203 Gun Hall Drive in the Prince of Anne District. The applicant is Janice Hart. Ms. Hart, please wait for your mic to be unmuted, and then you can make your comments.
Hi, yes, I'm Janice Hart. I live at 1203 Gun Hall Drive. I'm asking for a conditional use permit to be able to do wildlife rehabbing in my house for infant and baby wildlife there. I'm a licensed for currently cat, applying for a cat one once I get my conditional use permit. I'm sorry. I'm sponsored by Evelyn's Wildlife Refuge. The animals will be housed inside my house. I'm currently a registered nurse of 38 years, so this is a passion of mine to do, to help the wildlife. They will be inside my house. I do care for them there, and they will be cared for inside my house. There, I do have fenced yard there, the backside. I do have a six-foot instrument in the back there. I do have a six-foot yard there, yeah, as you can see there. I do have a couple cages that the animals will go out at the end there to get used to the outside there, and then they will go to Suffolk to Evelyn's Wildlife Refuge there. They will not be released at my property here in Virginia Beach. They will go out to Suffolk.
Okay, Mrs. Hart, thank you very much. Please stand by. I think we have one speaker, if I'm not mistaken, one speaker.
Yes, sir. We have the speaker sign up, Mr. Travis Ronnie. Mr. Travis, you have three minutes to make your comments. Please wait to be unmuted before you say you make your comments.
Yes, good morning, everyone. My concerns with this permit, so my property is at the, is an adjoining property next to Ms. Hart's. My concerns, first one would be with increase of, you know, infant or baby mammals occupying her backyard. The concern would be for an increase of predatory animals, such as hawks, snakes, raccoons, possums, that may have, could be lured into the area. And second, secondarily would be if a mammal were to escape her property, it would then, you know, enter the community or the neighborhood, and those were my two concerns. Just based off the letter I received in the mail, it was very vague, not a whole lot of details, so this, this meeting really brought a lot more information. So those, those two, those are my two concerns with this permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions? Misses Hart, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
I have posted out on my sign, since I posted the sign 30 days ago, that I had a letter inside there that anybody could contact me with any questions that they may have, and I had a brief description of what they may have. I believe he lives two doors down from me, and I did not hear from him. I do, I will have possums and squirrels, which are natural habitats of our area anyway there. I, if they did get released, they are natural wildlife in our area, so they would not be any harm to any of our animals. I do have a couple dogs myself, excuse me, there, so they, they would not be any harm to the animals in the area. They are natural wildlife in our area.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, Mrs. Hart? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, this is Don.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Horstley?
I had a question from Ms. Hart. I think if I heard her right, she keeps the animals in her home until they are ready to go outside and just, just prior to taking them to be released. Is this correct?
Yes, that's correct. They, they will be inside my house, and then the last two weeks before they're ready to be released, they go outside into a cage so that they can become acclimated to the environment.
How, how often do you have animals outside? Do you have them over there all the time?
Um, not, I mean, currently I have none there since I'm not doing it yet, but at places that I have worked at, typically it's, you know, like two or three times a year at the times that they're, before they're getting released.
And the number, the total number, if you were full, how many animals do you think you would have?
Um, it would vary. I mean, possums, we could have, you know, maybe five to 10 there, but they would be varying times, and squirrels, depending on storms there, so it could, it would vary. But I mean, I would not take a capacity. There's many other wildlife rehabbers that we share and transfer, transfer in between if any of us are loaded.
I think the concern of some people is that in the, in the smaller, the area that you live, the homes are so close together, and to put this in the middle of a residential area where, where everybody is so close, there may be some current concern there.
Yeah, I believe my other neighbor that's on the other side, I think that she is on, Brittany Bookout, she's at 1201, she's on my other side, direct neighbor.
Is she, is she in support?
Yeah, she's in support.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Horstley. Okay, maybe we'll close this to, does anybody else have any questions first? Any questions?
Actually, I kind of, I have a question.
Okay.
Ms. Hart, can you describe the cage in which they're going to be placed and as the, the exterior enclosure?
Well, a couple, the pictures that are up there are ones that I'm going to get. I mean, it's kind of hard with Virginia Beach because until you're approved for a conditional use permit, it's kind of hard to invest in getting a cage because they're quite expensive because they run, you know, between $300 and $400, so I have not purchased one as of yet, but the pictures there are ones that I'm looking into getting there, and they are quite good and well-built there, so I don't know. Can you see the pictures that are up there?
I can see them, yeah. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Mrs. Hart. Okay, we'll close this to the public and open it up amongst ourselves. Mr. Horstley or Mrs. Klein?
So we've approved several of these in the year that I've been here. Have, are we aware of any issues that other home-based facilities have encountered? This might be a, this is probably better question for planning staff. Once we approve them, is there, are there ongoing violations or concerns about their safety?
We'll have to defer that to Mr. Kemp.
I, yes, we have not had any recent issues with home-based wildlife rehab. In fact, if I can remember, the last one was, it was a raccoon rehab out near the ocean front. That was the last issue, and that was probably five or so years ago. So, you know, issues, a lot of issues come up at Planning Commission. You know, you're hearing problems that might be, but as far as official zoning complaints coming in through us and investigations, they're few and far between.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes, Chairman, I, I'm never, I've never really understood how people have such a passion for this, but evidently there are a lot of people who have a passion to do this, and we've approved many of them over, over the years, and like Mr. Kemp said, I don't think we get reports of any, you know, problems that have, that have arisen from it, from the approvals. So with that said, I recommend that we approve the application.
Sounds good. Do we have a second? Second, Mrs. Klein, we have a.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Horstley and Mrs. Klein's made a second. Ready for the vote?
If you are in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you are opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Enman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
And Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By a recorded vote of 10, 4, and 0 against, Agenda item six has been recommended for approval.
Thank you. On the next one, please.
The next item to be considered is Agenda item number eight, the application of William T. and Carolyn Del Wemps for a conditional use permit for outdoor recreational facility located at 1420 Claudia Drive in the Bayside District. We have nine registered speaker on this public request. The first speaker is Carolyn Wemps, followed by Bill Wemps. There, one individual just unmuted. Ms. Wemps, you can start making your comments. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Please start your comments.
Thank you. Members of the Planning Commission, thank you for listening to our comments and concerns today. My name is Carolyn Wemps, and my husband Billy and our granddaughter Bryland live at 1420 Claudia Drive. A few days ago, we were made aware that many in our neighborhood have been given misleading and inaccurate information about us, our yard, and this zoning process. This is frustrating and disappointing, so I hope today to clear up any statements and assertions for both our neighborhood and you, the Planning Commission. But first and foremost, I would like to explain what is actually happening at 1420 Claudia Drive. At the very back of our two-acre yard, hidden behind and underneath trees, is a strip of dirt, a portable net, also used for soccer, a ball machine, and three lights. The ball machine releases yellow rubber balls aimed at the ground, thus rolling them. There is no pitching. The rolling ball is scooped up and tossed into the net about five feet away. We set this area up 24 years ago. Let me repeat, 24 years ago, when our family and our five kids moved into this wonderful neighborhood. Our son Beamer loved to play baseball and wanted to practice outside of his school and team practices. Within a few months, he asked if we could add lights since he was getting home from school and practice after dark. We put up three down lights. These are not floodlights. They do not brighten up a large area, but instead they face straight down towards the ground so the ground ball can be tracked as it rolls across the dirt. You cannot see these lights from Cullen Road, Lakeside Drive, or Claudia. There is no hitting, no batting of balls, no throwing balls. In 24 years, we have not received one complaint, not one, zero. Not one complaint about any noise coming from the ground ball area, noise coming from kids in our yard, noise coming from our driveway or on Claudia Drive, or noise coming from a leaf blower. In 24 years, we have never had a complaint about lights in this area, lights in our yard, or car lights leaving our driveway. Not one complaint about traffic or parked cars. Not one complaint about any of our guests, adults, teenagers, or kids, or the number of people visiting our home. 24 years and not one complaint until recently. A complaint from our neighbors who live across the street, who have had 12 years and ample enough time and opportunities to let us know their concerns. I sure wish that they would have. Embedded in their two-page complaint and in their presentation of the issues to neighbors, I believe false statements have been made and false assumptions have been insinuated. I would like to offer a fact check for some of these rumors. One, the Wemps petitioned the city for an outdoor recreation facility special use permit in order to build a structure, a facility, a park. Even a baseball field with bleachers has been mentioned. Fact, we simply responded to zoning who responded to a complaint. We didn't believe we needed a permit for this 24-year-old play area in our backyard, but we paid the money and followed the process in an attempt to avoid unnecessary neighborhood drama. Two, the Wemps wanted to sneak this past the neighbors so they hid the orange zoning sign. Fact, we put this sign in the exact spot where Mr. Saunders told us to. Three, if the Wemps get this permit and build something, it's going to attract all sorts of people, undesirables, to the neighborhood. Fact, we've established we're not going to build, add, or change anything that hasn't already been here for decades. We are not a park. We're not open to the general public. The kids that come here to play are family and friends. We do not run a baseball business. We do not charge to play. We don't want to. Billy, my husband, played in college, coached at Old Dominion in Virginia Wesleyan, has helped with several high school and middle school teams and travel teams. He does this for fun. In our lives, we are scaling down, not adding. Four, the almost daily use of backpack blower noise for hours at a time to maintain this facility is disruptive and unacceptable. Fact, in the fall, Billy does blow off this dirt area, our two trampolines, and our back deck. It takes two or three minutes, not two or three hours. Five, Claudia Drive has been blocked and has disrupted UPS delivery vehicles. Fact, if cars have ever been blocked by, blocked, or UPS truck delivery has been blocked, we have never been notified. We're the only driveway on this gravel road. UPS drivers have to come down there just to deliver to us. I did speak to Sandra Lane this morning at our local UPS terminal in charge of this neighborhood, and she said, quote, "No driver in the 24 years you have lived there has ever complained about being blocked. They've only been surprised that you live at a dead-end street." Six, activities become tiresome and on weekends and holidays when lesson schedule is expanded. This is actually opposite of what is happening. During the weekends, there is virtually no activity with ground, this ground ball area. This has been consistent for 24 years. Kids who want to play, play extra and practice actually play on other teams, and they play games. When do they play games? On the weekends. They're usually out of town. I can't remember the last time anyone was over here on a Friday, Friday night, Saturday or Saturday night. On Sundays, one of our friends does bring his two boys regularly after church because their week is so hectic. Additionally, I facilitate a bereavement group on Sundays at 4:30. Perhaps our neighbors have seen those cars and have assumed they were here to play baseball instead of work through their grief. This is the only activity on the weekends. Seven, the Wemps requested this variance under the pretense of providing a safe place for children to play in response to restrictions imposed by a global pandemic. Fact, again, we have had this fun, safe place for children to play for over two decades. However, as you all know, last year our schools were closed, baseball seasons were canceled, rec centers, the Aragona Baseball Complex, and all fields were shut down. A friend of ours who helps coach one of our high school baseball teams lives a couple streets over. He did call and ask Billy if some of his infielders could come and use our ground ball area to practice. We said yes. Incidentally, we know of two more people in our neighborhood who have done the same for soccer players in their yards who have had a hard time practicing this past year. So for a few months, we have had more cars and people here than normal. Because of COVID, Billy told the coach only one kid at a time could go in the back and practice, so the others did have to wait in their cars. The kids and parents did tell us our neighbors were taking pictures of them, so we're assuming the monitoring of traffic and kids has been during this rare time. Our never, our neighbors never once told us about any inappropriate behavior, vandalizing litter, urination, or any noise from these kids or their parents, but since we have been notified and learned that the But since we have been notified and learned that the concern seems to be around the traffic, the cars parked, and actually, the car lights, we have instructed all of our visitors, family, friends, my bereavement group, bunko group, Spanish tutor, baseball players, anybody, not to park on the street, to pull all the way in our driveway, and we have plenty of room. Also, we have asked them to turn off their lights as they leave. We trust that this has and will continue to help. In closing, we do hope you will grant this permit. But we do agree with a couple of the restrictions. The first one, the lighting. We don't think it's necessary to remove the down lights from the back of our yard on this ground ball area. These lights are not visible to anyone on Cullen or Claudia, and they only shine straight down on the dirt area. We know that tennis courts can have lights, batting cages can, basketball hoops on driveways, backyard archery range, and swimming pools and decks can have lights. We hope that we're able to keep these lights up. We are not back there using that area much at all past eight o'clock anyway. And number two, the dusk time restriction. We don't think our family and friends and our granddaughter should have to stop playing in this section of our yard when dusk hits. By the time they get out of school or have afternoon activity, it is already dark. Brylin, our granddaughter and her friends, also play hopscotch out there, look for wild animal prints. They have a hideout out there. They pass back and forth, and they, along with their dads, run their remote-controlled cars on the flat dirt area. We're hoping, just as you approved the batting cage down the street from nine to nine P.M., that we will be able to use this part of our yard past dusk. You've also asked that we put an extension of a six-foot fence. We have no problem with that if you think that would help. We would be glad to put up another fence on down the line and extend the fence that's already there. We do have signatures, and we do have eight or nine letters of support from families who have actually lived on this gravel road, two houses on Claudia Drive. Mr. Calhoun, also from the Civic League, wrote you a letter saying he sees no problem with the area. But of course, like anybody, we want to solve any concerns of traffic or parking, and we feel like we have already done that, and we will certainly continue to do that. We love this neighborhood. We've lived here our whole lives. We do run a business from our home, simply sales. It's advertising especially, and it totally has nothing to do with this. We do this for fun. Thank you. We would never harm anything in this wonderful neighborhood, and I hope that you would consider our request. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wemps. The next speaker is Bill Wemps, followed by Brian Wemps. Mr. Wemps, you please begin by saying your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Billy Wemps. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm just going to read a letter from my son about when we first started this. My name is Beamer Wemps. I grew up in the Bayside area of Virginia Beach, specifically at fourteen twenty Claudia Drive. I vividly remember when our parents first took us to the property and house as potential buyers. My four siblings and I loved the place. The yard was huge on a gravel dirt road and on a dead-end street. To top it off, we had access to Lake Smith. This was truly a kid's paradise. My parents quickly made an offer, and we moved in in the spring of nineteen ninety-seven. My fondest memory of the childhood and young adult home is the ground ball area that my dad and I pounded out. It is a strip of dirt that is surrounded by trees and is located at the back of our two-acre lot. My dad made a ball machine that pointed downward and would release yellow rubber balls. These balls would roll, and I would scoop them up and then toss them in a net a few feet away. I was an avid baseball player and wanted to practice all the time. I wanted to be the best defensive shortstop around. At that time, I played on several teams along with my school team. Since I didn't get home from school or team practices until well past dark, I asked my dad to put up lights so I could practice at night. The lights faced down to the ground so the rolling ball can be tracked. During a typical team practice or game, an infielder only gets a handful of ground balls. In my backyard, I could easily take a couple hundred balls a night. I invited teammates and friends to come and practice as well. My dad played baseball for Clemson, played professionally for the Houston Astros, then coached at ODU and Virginia Wesleyan. He has helped with several of our high school and local travel teams. He knows baseball, specifically infield defense. For the last twenty-four years, he has graciously shared his expertise to any kid who wanted to practice and get better. This ground ball area has grounded us as a family. It is a place to hang out, practice, play, and become the best that we could. The other alternatives offered to kids both then and now are not nearly as favorable. My dedication did pay off as I was able to play for Baylor University before being drafted my junior year by the San Diego Padres. I was able to play almost a decade before an injury ended my career. I'm now passing along my baseball knowledge to youngsters in my area. During my childhood and teenage years, we never had one complaint of noise, lighting, traffic, et cetera. Believe me, we had a lot more going on when the five kids lived there and all participated in multiple-team sports. Our backyard is family and kid-friendly. It is hidden at the end of a dead-end gravel road. The ground ball area has never been a source of excessive lighting, noise, or traffic. It is a place for kids to do something positive. It is a place to dream and strive to make those dreams come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wemps. The next speaker is Brylin Wemps, followed by Zach Ho-Housen.
Yes, this is Mrs. Wemps. Brylin, our granddaughter, did not finish her schoolwork, so she's not going to be able to join us right now. She's in there virtually taking a test. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you. The next speaker is Zach Ho-Housen, followed by Jen Ho-Housen. Mr. Ho-Housen, please start by saying your name for the record, and you can start your comments. We will move on to the next speaker, Jen Ho-Housen, followed by Dennis Miller. We moved on to the next speaker, Dennis Miller, followed by Cindy Lewis. Mr. Miller, please start by saying your name for the record.
My name is Dennis Miller, and my wife and I own the property at forty-nine seventeen Cullen, which is adjacent to the Wemps' property. On the map that you had shown, it was right above the Wemps' property, intersection of Claudia and Cullen. My real question has to do with what I read from the complainants about looking at the ordinance and looking at Section 501, and specifically towards B, paragraph five. And most of their comments and trying to put stipulations on this are based on that. And when you look at paragraph five, it starts with "an accessory activity operated for profit in a residential dwelling unit," where? And I think that says everything, because the basis for their complaint has no validity because this is not a for-profit operation. If you look at their complaint, and they talk about traffic, and they talk about visible or audible evidence detectable, all of those things are completely within paragraph five. But paragraph five has no standing in this entire discussion based on the fact that this is not a for-profit operation. It is a recreational use of private property for the kids in the neighborhood and their friends. I believe that Ms. Wemps is absolutely correct. There should be no reason to remove the lights because this is not a for-profit. This is not a for-profit endeavor. And on top of that, I can't find anywhere within the ordinance where there's a necessity for them to have even applied for a conditional use permit except they were told to by city staff. So with that, I will repeat, I am fully in favor of them being able to use the facility at normal hours, that they've used it in the past, and to have the lights remain in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. The next speaker is Cindy Lewis, followed by Mary Howell. Ms. Lewis, please start by saying your name and your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Sorry, I can't hear you guys.
Yes, ma'am, you can start your comments.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, can you see me?
No.
I really want to show to see me.
Public webcam on not turned on.
Oh, no.
You can start your comments. Mr. Chair, if it's all right, we move on to your next speaker.
I'm sorry, no, 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 I'm here, I'm here. Oh, can you hear me?
Why don't you start your comments, please?
Okay, yes. My name's Cindy Lewis. My husband and I, I was hoping you could see me because I'm standing in my backyard, which is directly behind the Wemps' backyard. The baseball field actually faces my property. The lights, me and my husband have lived here for eleven years. We have never once seen the lights in our backyard at night. We actually have floodlights in our backyard. The noise, we have never been bothered by the noise. We've never heard anything. They are... I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. Just, I just want them to know that they're respectful, they're responsible neighbors. We've never been bothered, and we would be truly just sad if it had to go away. Sorry. But it's literally in my backyard. It's never even distracted us. I've had two small babies in this house. We lived here for eleven years. It's never once been an issue, ever. We live in a family-friendly neighborhood, and it would just be sad to see it go away. That's it.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lewis. The next speaker is Mary Howell, followed by Tammy Otani.
Hi, this is Mary Howell. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Please start your comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mary Howell. I live at fourteen seventeen Claudia, which is just across the creek from the Wemps' property. I was approached on Halloween Day by Carolyn Wemps to sign her petition that she said was because of the noise for the Halloween party for some neighborhood kids. I thought it was a little strange, but I signed it because that's what I had understood. I have since come to find out that it is specifically for, I guess, a conditional usage, whatever it is, agreement. I'm here to defend the neighborhood. I'm not here for Carolyn. I'm not here for Jen and Zach. It's a shame that the neighborhood is now at each other's throats. This should not be. This is a neighborhood where all the lots are an acre or more. We are a very peaceful, quiet neighborhood. That's what everybody loves about the neighborhood. Some of us are gardeners, some of us are bird watchers, some of us have pools. Nobody is here to irritate anybody else. The fact that they need this license tells me that it is irritating. We've lived with the batting cage for years. We hate it. It's noisy. We never complained because we want to keep the peace in the neighborhood. It sounds like they're setting up some kind of a park. That is not appropriate for a neighborhood. We should look at things that are beneficial to all our neighbors, not just one neighbor. Oh, actually, Jen and Zach are here to appear. Evidently, their computer was not working, so I'm going to turn it over to them. But please, please, think in favor of the neighborhood and what is good for the neighborhood, and that is peace and quiet and willingness to work with your neighbor. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, Ms. Howell. We will let the charity decide whether to bring Mr. and Mrs. Ho-Housen back for comments or not, but we're going to call on the next speaker, which is Tammy Otani.
Excuse me, Mr. Weiner, I have a question for the last speaker.
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah. Ms. Howell. So you're saying you have had problems with noise. Is that correct?
That's correct. The batting cage, when they had it up, was noisy. It's whack, whack. My husband and I do not complain about anything. We've been here for forty years. We believe in the peace, keeping peace with our neighbors, and we just sucked it up.
Is it noisy now?
No, it's not noisy now. The batting cage isn't there.
Right. Okay, that's kind of my point. Do you see the lights? Do you have a problem with the lights?
No, the way our house is faced, we're in the den at night, and we do not face that property.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The next speaker is Tammy Otani, followed by Zach Ho-Housen.
Hi, my name is Tammy Otani, and I am a former renter in the neighborhood. I'm writing this, or I'm talking to this group today because it came to my attention from friends in the neighborhood that there was concern raised about the impact to the neighborhood regarding the Wemps' use of their property. Our family rented a house, forty-nine twenty-one Cullen Road, which is right next door to Claudia Road, which is next to the Wemps'. We rented that property for a couple of years from Zach and Jennifer Holt-Housen. During that time, we were not aware that there were lights at the back of the house. I have been to their home and in their backyard on several occasions. And even at that point in the evening, I was not aware of any intrusive lights or noises. I was aware that Billy Wemps was coaching baseball. Families did park on the street in front of the Wemps' home, but only for short periods of time and only for a couple times a week. I'm a stay-at-home mom, and I never had a problem with anyone coming or going from the Wemps' home. In fact, the Wemps' home is one of the few properties in the area that have not had most or all of their trees removed, adding to the privacy. Living in that house on Claudia, I could not even see the Wemps' home, let alone anything that was going on in the backyard. I always found the Wemps to be very considerate neighbors. When their son was married in their backyard, both Carolyn and Billy came to us to let us know the event would take place and asked that we call if we had any problems with any of the guests. Their guests were very considerate, and we had no problems. My children were two of the many children who were invited to play in the Wemps' magical backyard. When you say that, you know, you hate to see the neighborhood suffer for a few people or a few neighbors, there are many children from all over the neighborhood who would play in that backyard and who have formed many wonderful childhood memories in that backyard. And not just because of the yard, but because of the Wemps and their hospitality. I would also ask the question, if people struggled with the problems going on, why would you be quiet instead of giving the Wemps opportunity to correct that? In fact, it bothers me a little bit that taxpayer money and time is being used to solve this when so many people say they had problems with it for so many years. This is not the first place you go to solve a resolution. If you're truly a good neighbor, you go to your neighbor, and you address that issue with them, and try and resolve it. I never had to... I never had to try to resolve an issue with the Weems. They were always the first to bring up any potential problem there was and resolve it that way. So I would hope that, since there is nothing changing over what has been happening the last few years, and as the last speaker said, there has not been the same.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Otani. Your three minutes' time is up.
Well, does anybody have any questions? The speaker. Okay, thank you.
Your next speaker is Zach Ho-Ho-Housen, followed by Jen Ho-Ho-Housen. Mr. Ho-Ho-Housen, please start your comment.
This is Jen Holtzhausen, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is it, is it all right if I go?
Are you the only one making the comment?
No, no, my husband's on his way, something is amiss with our computer and we weren't able to speak earlier when you called on us.
Okay, thank you. You can start your comment.
Okay. Well, actually, my notes are not quite as organized as my husband's were meant to be, which he was supposed to be reading before me, but thank you for the time to speak and for hearing our concerns. Also, I apologize, I'm a little nervous and emotional about this. We have owned our home for 12 years and we have lived there for 10, and we have tolerated baseball lessons since 2008, since we moved in, trying to be good neighbors. When the zoning sign went up on Claudia in December, we knew this was our time to be I have here in my hand over a year's worth of notes on how the business at 1420 Claudia affects us and how often it affects us. Why did I start keeping this log? I noticed an increase in traffic and I saw a customer actually discipline his child in our yard after lessons. I started keeping notes and yes, I took some pictures in case I needed to refer back to this. I personally have lost my tolerance for this on January 21st in 2019. Claudia Drive was filled with cars, and when I went into my own backyard to get wood, there was a man leaning on my mailbox smoking a cigarette, and I know that he was there waiting for lessons because I asked him why he was standing in the street in the dark. This spooked me, my husband was not home, I should not have to tolerate this when I go outside, that strangers are milling about. Please don't misunderstand this, this is not a complaint against our neighbors, it's opposition to our neighbors' business and the clientele it brings to our backyard. Our family is heavily affected, and some of the concerns and issues we have personally at 1421 Claudia have dealt with is the excessive traffic, two to four hours a day, three to four times a week, parked cars filling up the dead-end street, yes, it does limit access to the UPS, the FedEx, the emergency vehicles if they were to show up. The city itself sends a backup garbage truck down this road because it is small and there is no turning space, and a lot of the cars do park along our property line. It does limit access to our property, which does run the length of Claudia. Sometimes I can't mow my grass for concerns of the parked cars, I don't want to throw stones on them, or sometimes they're parked on a grass that I want to mow. Sometimes it's difficult for us to get our boat in and out or our utility trailers in and out of our parking lot area in our backyard. Because we don't have a staked driveway doesn't mean it's not access to our yard. Access to our mailbox has been blocked by the parked cars. We do listen to the sound of backpack blower, yes, as they prepare the field. People attending outdoor recreation events at 1420 Claudia have been addressed for urinating on our property, adults and children. They've been addressed for trespassing on our property, we've witnessed them changing their clothes in the streets. Adjacent to our yard, we've witnessed them disciplining their children, as I said, smoking, using our yard as a mailbox, or using our yard and our mailbox as a leaning post in a social gathering area. We've asked them to turn off.
Ms. How is it, then, your time allowed is up? I'll let the commissioner wish her to continue.
Yes, and any questions? Mr. Redman?
Yes. Okay, so Ms. Holtzhausen, I want to go over that just a little bit with you, okay, because I want to separate things that might occur or are very vague from things that are very specific. You have seen people urinating in whose yard?
Yes, sir, my yard.
And these were who, children?
I've seen children and adults.
Okay. And the parking problems that you described, how many cars are we talking about?
Some days it's ups of six cars, some days it's 12 cars, some days it's four cars. Like I said, I have records since October 2019 where I've counted cars, because the times they show up is usually dinnertime when my windows are open and I'm setting the table. So I see them come very clearly.
Did you share those records with anybody?
I have given some of these records to the city, yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Well?
The last speaker is Zach Ho-Ho-Housen. Mr. Ho-Ho-Housen, please begin your comments, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please start your comment.
Okay, I had a prepared statement, but unfortunately, it's at my house. My name is Zach Holtzhausen. I've got 24 years in the United States Navy, I'm a Master Chief and integrity is very important to me. I take pretty seriously the accusations of dishonesty that the Weemses have leveled at us, but let's be clear, the issue we take here isn't with kids playing in the yard. Nobody has a problem with kids playing in the yard and nobody's ever complained about kids playing in the yard. You don't need a permit for that. What we're talking about is baseball lessons being conducted for profit by Billy Weems on the property. There's nobody of baseball-playing age that lives on the property. Billy's son that he was talking about that plays baseball lives in Texas. We're talking about a business, Billy has told us personally on several occasions about his customers and the lessons that he charges for and just the amount of traffic and the disruption that we deal with on a daily basis is beyond what anybody should be expected to endure. And I understand that maybe some of the people who live on the other side of the property where the lessons are actually occurring aren't as affected as we are, but the fact is, is that we're the people who have to deal with the traffic and the disruption. Our property runs the entire 315-foot length of the dirt road that is Claudia Drive on that side of the property. We've had cars parked all the way up past our mailbox, we've had people wandering in our yard, we've had people destroying our property. I've had people confront me as if I was somebody who didn't belong there. As recently as a couple days ago, as four large diesel pickup trucks were ripping out of his driveway after dark and I was trying to check my mail, a pickup truck slowed down, built up RPMs and accelerated out of there kicking rocks intentionally at me as I was trying to check my mail. Yesterday, I had a guy parked in the middle of that road while I was trying to rake leaves, staring at me like I didn't belong in my own backyard. This is the issue we have. This isn't, this isn't kids playing, nobody has a problem with kids playing, nobody has a problem with Breiland's friends coming over, right? We're talking about young men, high school age and college age possibly, right? And I would stipulate that there are 19 baseball facilities within 15 miles of this place, right? So if it's a baseball opportunity, it exists, and if those facilities are closed due to considerations for a global pandemic, then why should these people be allowed to congregate and park basically in my backyard and on the Weems' property? That's our issue. It's not kids, it's not families, it's the businesses being run out of the residence. Thank you for your time. Sorry, I'm a little loud right now, I just had to run across the stream to get here.
Are there any questions? Speaker? No, thank you. Dave, Fredman?
Yeah, sorry, should have booked up sooner. Mr. Holtzhausen, did you all ever, I mean, we all have smartphones in our pockets, did you all ever take any photographs of these intrusions on your property? Is there six, eight cars parked on, you know, that are on the edge of my property and their wheels are such that I can't cut my grass? I'd probably have taken some photographs of them by now. Did you all ever do that?
Yes, absolutely. We have all kinds of documentation of these kinds of issues, and we've addressed these issues with the Weemses and gotten no resolution. Occasionally, they'll take a round, turn on things and tighten up their shot group a little bit, and for a week, things will be a little better, but it's like trying to tell somebody not to expect litter outside of a McDonald's is basically what we're dealing with. These aren't their friends, these are their customers, right? And each new batch of customers that comes in has to relearn this stuff all over again. We have pictures going back for plenty of time just showing exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay?
Mr. Chairman, there are no more rest of your speaker on this item.
Okay. Mrs. Weems, would you like to, any other comments, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. I would like to say we do not have customers, we do not have clients, these are family and friends. Our granddaughter actually also plays softball, has little girls over here doing the same thing in that area. We no longer have people parking on that street. We will definitely, and again, I wish I would have been told this, we went over there twice to our neighbor's house when this first came out and said, what can we do to help? What can we do to help? And we got nothing, so on our own, we have told people not to park there. Yesterday, there was a gentleman who did, well, a young guy, a middle schooler, I mean, a high schooler, that did come over, he called and he parked there for about five seconds and my husband ran out there and said, please come around back. I mean, please park in the driveway. We want to be good neighbors, we want to continue to be good neighbors. We will definitely make sure people do not park there and people will not be out there congregating. Again, it was different last year because we did allow that one coach to bring over his guys and they had to wait out there because of COVID, we wouldn't let but one child back there at a time. And so it was different, it was unique, and I'm sorry for that, and it's not going to happen, and again, for the noise, there is no noise. That machine, and I wish the people that were here would have turned it on, makes less noise than my dishwasher. There is no batting cage, there's three batting cages in our neighborhood, we do not have one, there's no sound of a bat hitting a ball. So we want to continue this, and again, we will be very, very purposeful to make sure none of our visitors, no matter what they're there for, will be parking on that street and will be congregating not any whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a couple of questions here. Mr. Redman?
Yeah, Ms. Weems, thank you for that. So I want to explore this a little bit because I'm not sure frankly that I'm comfortable with, you know, with the promise that we'll ask people not to park there, I'm more inclined to add a condition to that effect. I don't, frankly, I don't care about whether or not anybody's charging a fee to have, to service, it's the impact on other people. And of course, later in this agenda, we're going to have, you know, our, how many agenda items that we always have with regard to short-term rentals, and it's all about noise and traffic and the impacts on other people. So that's what I think is really the issue that we have to be particularly concerned about. So tell me about, I've got this, I've got this map, where is it you're asking your patrons, I'll leave the word at that because I don't want to judge it, there's obviously quite a disagreement about that. Where is it you're asking your patrons, the folks that come to your house that don't live there, come from someplace else, where are you asking them to park?
There's not a close-up there, but if you come?
Yeah, we got what we got on 14, and Google, you do have a very wooded neighborhood, so you know, Google Earth is not helping me much.
If you come down off Cullen Road, off that gravel road of Claudia Drive, Claudia Drive has three sections, we're in the middle section, we're actually the only house on that middle section, it dead-ends. If you come to the dead-end where our mailbox is, you can then take a little left and circle around, and there is a huge, huge area to park. There's no problem in getting people to park. Again, I did not know this was an issue. My son was over not too long ago, and there was no cars in our driveway, and he just parked at that dead-end street because it's kind of like you just pull in there and park, so we told him, no, 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 don't park there. But our driveway actually circles around and makes a big circle, and so they can park anywhere there and, or, yeah, just, they just pull around, and it's a gravel driveway, and it circles around at our mailbox and it goes back and connects to Claudia.
Okay.
So we will make sure, and again, I will be very, very, and yeah, we can even put a sign up or, you know, as people, we'll just tell people, don't park on the street anymore, and they haven't been, and I know it's, hopefully it's been helpful to our neighbors. They will not be parking there anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ockrow, do you have a question?
Yeah. Mr. Redman, I agree with your concerns, I just want to express my concerns. Ms. Weems, in your presentation, again, you stated that on occasion, you've got to have them wait, and I don't know how many cars you're asking to wait, but I don't have a problem with it when it's family, but when you're inviting people from all over and they're having to wait on the property or down the street or down the next streets, that's where I have concerns of. How many cars have you had stacked up out there at one time?
Again, this is not usual, like I said, usual is Sunday afternoon, so we have a friend to bring his kids over. This has been unusual because of that coach's asking us to let his infielders come, so we did allow that. So last year was unusual, it's not typical. There were several cars out there, the only reason why we made them wait, just this one group of infielders from one of our local high schools, was because COVID, because the groundball area in the back is not very big and we did not want even two kids out there. Normally, like the person that comes, our friend that comes on Sunday, his two boys go back there, you know, with each other, and they take groundballs. And so if there's two or three kids back there, or my granddaughter and her friends back there, that's fine, but because of COVID, because these kids did come, and again, that was unique, that is different, that is not the norm, we did make them wait because we didn't want kids back there. So that's not happening anymore. That was a, that's, that was a unique condition, and hopefully now, baseball will start back up, but no, it is not typical for us to have a line of cars and have people wait. That did happen because of COVID, and now that we know, we will make sure that that never happens again. That doesn't happen. That was not, that was not normal, that's not normal activity.
So do you advertise this, or is it?
No, no, no.
How do people know? Schools and localities, how do they know to call on the youth, they can come?
Yeah, well, I mean, if, you know, we've had five kids in sports, I play tennis, I know the tennis community, I know, my daughter knows the volleyball community, my other knew the soccer. The coach that asked us actually used to live in the neighborhood and took groundballs with my son, so he knew about the area, and it's just, you know, and Beamer, you know, when these kids grow up, and even though he's not here anymore, there's kids in our neighborhood who are now doing what Beamer did, they play on several teams, they play on several travel teams, they tell kids, they get really bad, and they're like, how'd you get so better? And they're like, oh, my gosh, you know, you know, in our neighborhood, you know, the Weems have the groundball area, and so they just, you know, I guess word of mouth, but it's all people that we know, except for, again, the situation with this one group is because a coach lives two streets over, he's been here before himself when he was younger, and so he knew about us and my husband. So we do not, we do not ask at all.
Mr. Wall?
Ms. Weems, can you address the neighbor's concern about people urinating on the, that's been brought up, except for urinating?
I have never, I have never seen or heard from them anything about anybody urinating on anybody's yard. Of course, that is just awful, and I know that if I was in a situation and my neighbor had friends over and one of their cars or friends urinated on them, I would go straight over, and if that would have happened, we would have really gotten down to the bottom of it. I do not condone that, I have never heard of that, I've never seen anybody litter, I've never seen anybody on their property, I'm not saying it's not true, I've never seen or heard any of these complaints until I read the letter of complaint. I do not condone that, and we just, you know, we don't even let people, you know, throw their cigarette butts on our driveway, you know, I mean, so I totally agree, that's unacceptable, and if it happened, I'm so sorry, but I have never heard of it or seen it.
Mr. Graham? Have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for Mrs. Weems. Does your husband coach now?
Does he coach now? No, he coached, you know, we're Does he coach now? No, huh? He coached, you know, we're, we're kind of old, older than age. So, but, um, but I mean, people know that, that he, he knows his baseball. He knows his baseball, but he does, he does not coach at all. He, he has coached probably 15 different teams, but no longer.
Right, right. But they're coming over to work with your husband on ground balls not hitting?
No, there is no hitting at all. When we moved here, we had a batting cage in our old neighborhood on Lake, at Lake Smith Terrace. When we moved here 24 years ago, we did have the batting cage up. That has been take, that was taken down, I believe 15 years ago. My husband does go out there in the back and talks to these kids. He will help them if they want his help. Obviously, sometimes they're out there just playing around, but he is always willing to help any kid that wants to get better. Because he does know his-
Got you, got you. And I mean, I, I understand baseball, um, and, and, uh, you know, I know there's, there is, you know, there's not a lot of places to get that production and to be able to practice. It sounds like to me, it just sounds like even from what you're saying, it's not just kids. It sounds like more kids coming from high schools and it's, it's from people coming. It's not, it's not, you know, the, the nine-
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear anything.
Did we lose Mr. Graham? We lost Mr. Graham. He's, he is out. Mrs. Oliver, do you have a question?
I do. Mrs. Williams, can you address your reluctance to, or maybe, I want to make sure I understand it. Let me rephrase that. Can you address whether or not you are in agreement with all the conditions as far as the lights, the dusk, ending plane at dusk and the backyard?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, no, we do not agree with removing those three down lights back there in the back because they shine downward and, you know, the, the neighbors that have complained have, and the other person said they can't see the lights. My neighbor that's directly behind that fence, I bother her, the really lights that shine down on that area. But obviously, like when our granddaughter, who's now playing softball and a couple of her girlfriends, by the time they get through with school on some days, it's almost dark. And so again, we're not out there late at night, but in the winter months where it gets dark so early and, you know, school doesn't get over, she's got Spanish and piano. By the time she's done with that, if you don't have any lights back there, you can't play. She and the girls next door and down the street, they go back and forth through that gate back there. They've got a little hideout place there. They do their remote control cars back there. I just don't think it's reasonable to limit that part of our yard to dusk. So I would like to be able to keep those lights up.
Well, let me ask you this. If they, if you do limit it as to dusk and the lighting, then that, and I'm not referring to the neighbors that abut you from that side, but to the neighbors on the other side that are having to deal with a lot of comings and goings, that would reduce the hours of people coming and going and practicing.
Um, you know, I'm not really sure. Again, I would hate to, you know, I don't know, I don't know. I, I think that it's just really hard for kids, especially now when we're trying to promote outdoor activity and play. And, and I, I'm all about practicing and refining your skills and getting better. I just wish that we wouldn't say that you can't do that past dusk on certain, I mean, obviously in the summer, it doesn't matter because it's lighter a little bit longer. But, um, you know, it's in our backyard and the, and, but I get what you're getting at. It's not really about the lights. It's about the car lights. And so I, again-
Well, it's about the number of people coming and going and the traffic that is being created by the fact that you have lights and you, to have practice a lot longer. And so with that, if you, if you, if you cut those hours back, then maybe it wouldn't be so impactful to the neighbors that are, are having issues.
Yes. I mean, you know, and I, and I know that y'all okayed something the other day from nine to nine. We're not asking till nine o'clock every night. We're not out there at night that much, really. Um, maybe there's kids that go out there a couple of times a week, maybe. The lights aren't turned on that much, but I just think that's too much of a restriction. But I will definitely, I would definitely be great with limiting cars, you know.
I don't, I don't see how you can do that. I think that really to, to follow up with the conditions. Well, then I'm up for that too, babe.
Hold on a second. Mr. Inman has, Mr. Inman's had his hand up. Let me see something real quick, please.
Thank you, David. Ms. Williams, what number of people would you be willing to restrict to be on the property at any given time that are not residents in your house and is activity?
I mean, okay, like Sundays, there's the dad with his two kids. I mean, I, you know, a couple, I mean, a couple people is fine. Again, the thing with the, and I don't want y'all to think that we're just like bringing in carloads of kids from all over that we don't know. That's not the case. The, I think the difference is why, why the car lights have been a problem. And I think besides a personal little matter, I think the main concern is because there what has been more cars because of this, that we did say, tell this coach that his infielders could come over. That is not the norm. So I don't want y'all to think that we're just getting baseball teams over here to practice. That's not, that's not correct. But the cars have been more because this one group. So I would be glad to, you know, limit that, you know, if they, if it's okay for them to come and use this during COVID. If they could, you know, four of them pile on one car or if they could just limit that, I'd be fine. But I, I don't know, three, two cars in our driveway, is that too much? Three cars? That's fine. Three cars is fine. I mean, I've got my bereavement group on Sundays at 4:30 to 6:30, which is in the dark, and there's six of us. There's six different cars for that. But I mean, I'll be glad, two or three cars, that's fine because it's not, it, it was just that rare situation with that one coach that asked us as a friend to help his kids out. And during this time, I think, I'm glad we did and I, I'm glad we did. And I know other people in the neighborhood have, have done it for soccer teams as well, soccer players.
We're trying to deal with the number of people on your site at one time. It appears to be a problem. And so I, I think we're going to have to deal with that. I'm trying to give you a chance to tell us. I think you have. I think you've given us an indication. But what we're talking about the, here, participants in the baseball equipment and site in the back of your house. Is there a backyard fence already? There's a condition that says, uh, there's going to be a solid six foot tall fence along the backyard property line. Is that something that's already there?
And so I think the condition is to extend that fence all the way down till it gets to that ball machine, which we're fine, which we're fine to do. I mean, again, no ball is pitched and no ball is hit. So no balls can go over a fence, their roll, but that's fine. You know, that's fine. If, if that would help, we'll, we'll be glad to, to extend that fence all the way down. We've never seen a need for it, but if that would help, we would certainly be glad to do that.
All right. And condition number one talks about hours, says 9:00 AM to dusk. How about if it was 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
That would be very acceptable to us.
Okay. That's all the questions and comments I have from Ms. Williams.
Mr. Redmond?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make sure that we're addressing things that are, that are problems and not, and not just kind of, you know, limiting for limiting sake. I agree with Mike. You know, people do things past dusk. And, um, and so I, I mean, I, I don't know where that, that, um, that condition came from, but I think it's, I think it's too much. You know, I don't, does anybody have any more? I'd kind of like to get into discussions. Does anybody have any more questions for Ms. Williams? I don't need to, I don't think we need to have her, you know, on point here. If we can go ahead and go to the discussion about how we, as, you know, resolve this as best we could.
Any more questions, Ms. Williams? All right. And we will close this and go to discussions. And Mr. Redmond, this is your area anyway.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think it's possible that more than one thing can be true. And I think it's very possible that people have had a wonderful time in, I've been here before to Ms. Williams' house. It was a long time ago, probably about 15 years ago or something. But in any event, I've been here before. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It's a big piece of property and I'll bet you there have been for many, many years. A lot of family and friends and neighbors who have enjoyed themselves there and in that regard, probably is a very, very good thing. It's also the case, very obviously, it seems to me that there are at least some neighbors who have been very negatively impacted at times, you know, by the cars that are encroaching on their property. I don't know that that's a function necessarily of the number of folks who are there, but where they are parking, which is why I think the most, and I'm not saying we don't need to have some sort of restriction necessarily on a number of cars, but I don't think that's a big problem because they do have a big driveway. I would be, I think would be much more sensible to add a condition that restricts parking for this facility to the applicant's property and that they not park on Claudia Drive, on the public part of Claudia Drive. That way, the neighbor doesn't have people parked on their grass when they try to cut the grass or people who go to the bathroom in their yard because there aren't going to be any people there. I mean, I think that's about the most sensible way to do it. I don't know exactly how to word it all. I think I kind of said it about right. But I, I, I want to make sure that we're, I do the one thing that Mr. Inman did that, want to make sure that we're, what we're dealing with is a backyard neighborhood recreation area, right? That's associated with, and not a, and not a, a training facility that you would think would be, I don't know, a high school ball field. And, uh, and listen, I, you know, I could walk to Independence Middle School. I can walk to Thurgood Elementary School. There are lots of ball fields around that don't have people on them all the time. So, I mean, if, if it's a, you know, if it's a, a commercial training facility or, you know, something that's more, you know, that's of a, of a broader scale than simply a family's backyard, I think that's a different matter. But it doesn't sound that way to me at least, except for perhaps this one instance where there are a whole bunch of people there, which Mrs. and Mrs. Williams, I would urge you, urge you not to ever do again because very obviously it's caused you a big problem. So I would like to add a condition that says that anyone outside of the family, I mean, help me with the wording, folks, but that, that, that for this use, parking be restricted to the applicant's property and that there not be any parking on the public street. Does that make sense?
Yes. Mr. Costin, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up? Did you want to say something?
And I'm not, and Mr. Inman, I'm not, I'm not saying that the limit is not, it's kind of a different matter, but that's the thing that most concerned me was where are these cars?
Mr. Costin, did you want to comment?
Yeah, uh, the complainants said that they had shared some of this information they had gathered. And I was wondering if staff had been aware or seen any of this information since they recommended approval.
Mr. Costin, thank you. We, we had looked through the complaints that we had. Based on the information that we have in the system, we, it does not appear that we, the planning staff, actually received the, the photos of the complaints. I'm not sure if, and again, I do not know if it maybe went to the police for parking in the, in the public way or something like that, or was blocking the Claudia Drive portion. So we did check our files and we did not find any of the photos or anything that was provided by any complainant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions or comments? Mrs. Klein?
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, a couple of things. First, I want to say that just because this recreation activities have been going on for 24 years doesn't mean that they didn't require a permit to begin with. So it just took this long for whatever reason for it to be brought to the city's attention. It also sounds like there's been a lot of brewing resentment over the last couple of years that may or may not have been direct, addressed directly or indirectly. But clearly multiple neighbors have very strong feelings over what's going on in the backyard. And as someone currently embroiled in that, my own issue with something like that, I, I can appreciate the contention and the frustration from all sides. I do have concerns over the volume of activity that's happening at the property and the examples that were brought forth by some of the neighbors about the things that have been going on over the last couple of years. Confrontation can be scary and it sounds like they have, um, have done the best that they can. And we can't say what we would do in a situation until we're actually in it. So I don't think it's fair to say if I was, you know, if someone was peeing on my property, I would say something. I, at this point, I am inclined to, um, vote in opposition. I agree that there are multiple additional conditions that need to be put in place. And if the applicant were agreeable to those, I may be willing to, to vote in support. But at this time, I'm, I'm leaning in opposition of the, uh, the application.
Mr. Inman, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Um, I agree with a lot of what Mr. Redmond had to say. I think it's hard to put a number on the number of people that could be on the property as I was talking about earlier. I do believe that the Williams are good, fake, good people and intend to be good neighbors. And they kind of let it get out of control during this COVID situation. And I think they're pretty much on notice that, that, that they're now more or less under scrutiny that they have not been for the past 24 years. And I think that that will mean a lot to them to, to, and I think they do want to be good neighbors. So that said, I, I, I would propose that condition number one be modified to be nine o'clock to 9:00 PM. Leave in the six foot fence, the lighting, you know, nobody's concerned about the lighting. Nobody seems to be adversely affected by the lighting. It is down lighting. It's only three lights. And I, I just don't, I don't see why there's a problem with the lights. I haven't heard anybody. I've, I've, I've heard people say that there is, is no problem, a testimony that there's no problem with the lights, people who live behind them. And, uh, so I don't see any reason to, uh, remove the lights. So I would delete item three, condition three. And, um, I would add a condition that the number of vehicles, whatever vehicles are visiting the property must be parked on the property and not on the street. And, uh, and if those things were done, I would, uh, propose that we pass it.
Mr. Redmond?
I, I, I can't agree more with Mike, Mr. Inman, but I do have a couple of quick questions for staff. So 24 years, she said, 24 years is a pretty long time, but did, how did this come to our attention? Were there complaints specifically about the use and about the property that caused us to get into this?
Mr. Redmond, this is Kevin. I can address that. Yeah, this came to our attention with a zoning complaint that was called into our office. As you can see throughout all this discussion, with a site like this and its location, we wouldn't have caught it, you know, just driving through the neighborhood on our own volition. So it came in as a call to the zoning office.
And what was the nature of the complaint?
The nature of the complaint was, uh, you know, that they were operating- The nature of the complaint was, you know, that they were operating this facility, and it was concerns with parking noise and light.
Okay, all right, thanks. My second question, and I don't know if it's for you, Kevin, Kevin, is what is the purpose of the condition about the lighting? I mean, I, is that just kind of something we kind of feel compelled to throw in where there are lights anywhere? But just like Mike said, I was struck all along, and what I can just look at the pictures and tell you that point downward. But the, I haven't heard anybody really who had any problem with the lighting unless, as you say, that was part of a complaint that you had called in, but I, I don't, I just didn't get that.
Right, and, you know, after hearing the neighbors, I tend to agree with you on that. The lights were not the predominant thing on the complaint. It was the parking was really what sparked it. The lights are standard, you know, in regards to protecting the neighboring properties. If it's screened enough where the lights aren't an issue, you know, I don't see how the zoning office would have an issue removing that, that condition. But they were not the, not what brought the complaint to our attention.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Yep, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes, honestly, Mr. Inman has his hand up. One second, and Mrs. Oliver and Mr. Wall, let's, can we go around real quick?
I was going to say, I would add a condition that this be reviewed again in a year for, to ensure compliance.
Sounds good. Mrs. Oliver?
They have a beautiful piece of property, and I just want to sort of designate where parking on their property is because that's a huge piece of property, and I'm trying not to nitpick, but you could, you could, I mean, that's a, I don't know how many acres they have, which is fabulous, but it is a gorgeous piece of property with plenty of room for a lot of cars. Are we asking, Dave, are you asking them to stay on the driveway or can they park anywhere on their piece of property?
I don't know. I frankly am uncomfortable trying to define where cars would have to be parked on someone's private property, if it's their private property. So, I mean, as long as it conforms with the, you know, with all the applicable ordinances. If you come out to my property, I'm not going to, you know, I don't want somebody to tell me, as long as you're on my property, that you can only park, you know, next to the garage and not, you know, at the end of my driveway. It seems to me if you're on their property and not on the public street, then, you know, that's, I think that's probably as far as, as we should go, and I think that's a lot.
Well, then, I guess that's a question for Kevin, then. How does that work as far as zoning and parking goes?
In regards to parking on their property, or parking in general, you know, zoning, zoning ordinance in general is really silent as to where they park on their property. You know, they're required to have, they were, you know, two spaces for single-family residents, but the zoning ordinance doesn't enforce other parking. If there were, you know, excessive parking throughout, it would probably get kicked to the Department of Housing for a junk, junkyard, junk vehicles type of complaint, but zoning doesn't enforce it.
I mean, my, my concern, very frankly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Redmond.
Yeah, my concern was about the neighbor who had the problems with the, you know, with the, with the guy leaning on the day, on the, on the mailbox with the urination, with the, with the cars abutting their property. If it's not, you know, if, if they're on, if, if you're on the Weems' property, then it seems to me those, those problems go away. I do think it's kind of, I'm not nitpicking, but I don't know that it's, I think we, if we get the parking on the applicant's property, it seems to me we've accomplished what we're trying to accomplish in that regard and protected that neighborhood from the encroachment on, on their property.
Hello, Mr. Wall, did you have a comment?
Am I due? And, you know, I think that the Holtzhausen has, that the Holtzhauses have some very, they've got some, you know, significant, you know, real concerns, and I think that, I think that they have, I think they're, you know, valid, but I also think that, you know, some of the things that, you know, Dave and Mike have spoken about, about, you know, pulling the traffic off, off the public right of way. You know, I have plenty of people that I can look at my window and I can see their cars, and they're on the public right of way, and it's, but they're not parking in the grass, which in this case, it does seem like that that's occurring on the neighbor's property as well as some other activities. But, you know, I, I think that, you know, by, by keeping it on the Weems', the Weems' property, that that would be, you know, a valid, would help, help address, you know, help address some of their concerns as well as allowing them to, to continue to, you know, have a backyard pitching machine in operation. And I think that, you know, some of the city's points about, you know, some of their conditions, you know, were to help limit the activity with the lights, but I, it's hard to see where that actually is a direct, directly correlates to their operation. And so I'd be in support of removing that condition also. But yeah, my comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Inman?
Thank you. I have a question for staff. Can any staff member tell us how many vehicles could park in the, in the paved or gravel parking area driveway on the Weems' property? Approximately?
Give us one moment.
Hi, this is Johnson Sanders. The Planning Commission members that did go out to the site, we were able to park at least four or five vehicles in the driveway along with the two that the applicants had, so probably at least seven vehicles.
Okay, having heard that, I'm inclined to kind of honor Ms. Oliver's comments that from an enforcement standpoint, it really sort of needs to be defined, and if they can park that many cars in the driveway, then that should be enough to take care of business, not, not to make a pun, but the, the, I would, I would favor restricting the parking to be in the, in the driveway.
That sounds good. Would you like to make a motion and put all that together?
I can. I, I would move that as to condition number one, that it be changed to read from nine o'clock to nine PM, and that condition number three be removed. That parking of visitor vehicles be, or any vehicles on the property be on the prop, on the driveway. And that this application or permit would be reviewed in one year for compliance.
Mike? Mr. Inman? Administrative review?
Administrative review.
I second the motion.
What about the lights? I didn't hear anything about the lights.
Yeah, he said remove it.
Okay, all right, okay, good luck, okay. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Akres, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Inman and a second by Mr. Redmond.
Chairman, this is Don, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Horsley, I can't see you, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm not good to be seen anyway today. The, the condition number four, what is the reasoning behind that? I mean, not open to general public or not, shall not operate for profit. Does that, does that carry any validity?
Say that one more time, Mr. Horsley, I'm sorry.
I say the, the condition number four, by not being open to general public and you shall not operate for profit, does that, does that condition really need to be in there? Is that, does that carry any validity to the situation we've got here? My assumption is that some of the Weems, most of Ms. Weems is probably there all the time anyone comes anyway, so I don't think they're going to just let anybody come in like a general park and things like that. I don't, I don't understand why that condition is in there.
Mr. Horsley, we, we put that condition in there because it was, it was reflected to us in the discussion with the applicant that the people that were coming here weren't, I don't want to say, I guess the word's not solicited, but advertised to come here. As, so it's, as they had noted, it's a, they have told us in the hearing that it's not a business that they're making a profit from or, or, and then also that they're not actively advertising it to the general public. That's what that condition is meant to say, supposed to reflect how they've, they've stated their application.
So, so they actually requested to put that in there, okay.
Well, this, this, they didn't ask, but that is reflective of what they've, what they have explained to us in their application.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, ready for the vote?
If you're in favor of the motion, say yes, and if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Akres?
No.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Mr. Cl, Ms. Klein, I'm sorry?
No.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By recorded vote of eight, four, and two against, agenda item number eight has been recommended for approval with the addition of condition one to, to reflect a nine AM to nine PM time, the removal of condition number three, and a condition added to restrict parking to the applicant's property and not on Claudia Drive. Administrative approval is already noted on condition number five.
Great, thank you very much. Let's move on to item number 13.
Thank you. The next item for consideration is the applicant of Brant Feldman for a conditional use permit for a car wash facility located at 4937 Broad Street in Bayside District. The applicant representative is Eddie Badon. Mr. Badon, you have up to 10 minutes. Please begin your comments. Eddie Badon? Mr. Badon, please begin your comments. Mr. Badon, can you hear me? Looks like the applicant is not available. Mr. Chair, would you like me to move on to the speaker?
Would it be easier to go to item 17 and come back to 13?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Let's go to item 17 and then come back to 13.
The next item for consideration is item 17, the application of Brant Feldman for a conditional use permit for outdoor recreational facility. The property is located at 1708 River Court in the Lynn Haven District. The applicant representative is Mr. Leslie Watson. Mr. Watson, you have 10, up to 10 minutes. Please give staff a minute to unmute your microphone before you make your comments. Leslie Watson. As Mr. Watson is not available, would you like me to call on the next speaker who is also an applicant representative on the application?
We're, and you're on item 18, correct? The skateboard, the, up?
Number 17.
I'm sorry, 17, okay, it's 17, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine, if the, if they're there, if they're available.
Mr. Nathan Lally, can you come? Nathan Lally? Mr. Lally, please state your name right there and begin your comments.
Yes, this is Nathan Lay. There's some corrections here. Les Watson was representing the project at State's Court, which was approved through the administrative, excuse me, through the consent agenda. Mr. Brant Feldman is actually on this call. He will be representing himself on this project, and I will stand by to answer any questions that may come up regarding specifics.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Brant Feldman? Please start by saying your name and start your comments.
Good afternoon, this is Brant Feldman. I'm doing with my wife, Carrie Feldman. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. And first, I just wanted to, one, apologize that this is coming before the Planning Commission after the ramp was already constructed, and I was unaware that the permit was required, and I recognize that ignorance is no excuse of the law, so I want to apologize. Second point I, I wanted to bring up immediately was that we are certainly willing to accept the staff recommendations and conditions in order to have approval for the ramp. The, there were a couple of conditions that we were simply hoping that the commission would consider possibly changing, given some extenuating circumstances. So I'll hit those quickly. The first that I wanted to bring up is item number six, which is a change, shall be secured across the ramp when the ramp is not in such use that the ramp cannot be used. The, when we bought this home, as you can see, it had a seven-foot security fence all the way around the, the property, and the property is all the way down at the end of River Court, and we get no traffic down here. The ramp has been up for, I want to say probably in excess of four months, and we've never had anybody even come down to this end of, of the court. And the only reason why I had any, I don't even know what to call it, I don't even know what to call it, an objection, but a thought on it was just the, the chain banging against the skate light can tend to damage the ramp, and, you know, also just having it on there, having the kids with a chain out there, you know, was, was another thought. So just given the, the position of the house and the security fence around it, we just felt it was unnecessary. But again, if it's something that the commission feels very strongly about, we would certainly accept, accept that. And the, the one that we maybe had a little bit more concern about was item number seven. It says at least one adult shall be outside the house and present when the ramp is in use. We really didn't understand the full purpose of, of this condition. You know, we, we bring our children to, prior to building this, to all the other skate ramps. We, the city of Virginia Beach, we would bring them to that skate ramp, and there's no requirement that an adult be there, there's no adult supervision at the Virginia Beach, at Mount Trashmore. There's a ramp located at WRV and one at Coastal Edge, and both of them are, are, you know, proceeded to their own risk, and there's no adults out there, there's no adult supervision, people just drop their children off. And so we felt maybe that this one, we didn't really understand why we had to stand outside, and, you know, the, the only thought was potentially it was a, a safety, something for safety, but, you know, we require our kids to wear safety equipment when they use it, and, you know, one of our kids falling on the ramp, us standing outside is not going to prevent them from, from falling. So we did, rather than have us standing out there, I mean, we would treat this ramp similarly to how we treat our swimming pool and our trampoline, that, you know, there's always an adult, you know, present at the house, you know, when the kids are using these things. So in the event that there's an emergency or something that, that we can respond, but so we were probably either having that one, item number seven, either removed or potentially amended just to say to have an adult home while the ramp was in use. I think that concludes our comments. Thank you very much for consideration.
Well, thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Feldman? No questions? Okay. Any more speakers?
That is our speaker we have for this item.
That's all the speakers we have. All right. Um, we're going to close it and open it up for discussion. And this would go to Mr. Graham.
So, so staff recommended approval, um, with the conditions and, and correct me wrong, the applicant's now willing to accept all the conditions.
No, he is, but the item number six and number seven, um, is ones that he wants to get not in there, the chain over the, over the, over the ramp while it's not there, and an adult outside, um, while the ramp is in use.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think that, I think the chain on the ramp should be there, um, to prevent kids that aren't welcome skating there. Um, the adult outside, I don't, I don't know that that's as, as, as necessary. That's just my, my opinion. But we did receive some, some opposition. Uh, we see, received a letter from, uh, a neighbor, uh, which I saw just earlier, uh, this morning, um, where I guess there's foul language being used out there and, and, um, you know, which kind of makes you wonder if, 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 if an adult doesn't need to be there. Um, so I, I just, you know, I guess I'm, I'm torn a little bit. I think it's great that the kids have something to do. There's a lot worse things they could be doing. Um, so I, I just, um, yeah, I'm, I guess a little torn on this.
Mrs. Oliver?
Dee, you received the, uh, the email as well.
Yeah, I did. And that's, that's sort of what caught my, sort of flagged this a little bit. And, um, and, and that they were complaining about the amount of noise. And really wasn't, it was the foul language, um, that was really a concern of hers, which I can appreciate. I mean, nobody wants to be out there yard and, and have to listen to that all day, or however long she's listening to it. So she requested, I was trying to look and read a letter that, um, was, was the hours or adult supervision while being used. So I don't think, you know, I'm not worried about her home value as much as I am just general being outside and having to listen to a bunch of foul language. But maybe the applicant can, um, did you close this, David? Cause I was just curious as to, I don't know. I just, that's my problem with that.
I did close, but if you want to, would you like to ask him a question, the applicant?
I, I just, I would be curious to find out just how much this is used and do they have a problem with that? Or is, I don't know. I've just, I'm a little torn on this with, um, as Whitney is.
Mr. Feldman, are you still available?
This is Bran Feldman. I'm, I'm still available. Yes.
Mrs. Oliver has a question for you.
I don't know if you could hear me or not, but we're, we're sort of, we got a letter in about, um, the skateboard and the amount of foul language that's being used and how loud it is and, and what a disruption it is to a neighbor of yours.
Yes, ma'am. Um, that was the, you know, the first we've heard of any foul language. That was never brought to our attention. Obviously, we have two young boys, 11 and 13, and I, I don't tolerate that type of language with my children. So it's something that I will certainly speak to them about and ensure that when they're using the ramp today, that they're being courteous, they're not being loud, they're certainly not cursing. Um, you know, when we learned that there was some objection to the ramp, we immediately, you know, we immediately took additional, um, measures to work with our neighbor. Again, you know, things we did, we filled the coping with foam. We, you know, I spent another thousand dollars to have the end caps covered because that reduces the noise. We had insulation put underneath it. Um, you know, we've offered, we told them they, their concerns were some of the, the, the sound when they like to sit outside, uh, at sunset. We're good neighbors. We said, hey, if you're ever outside and this ramp is bothering you, call us. We'll pull our guys inside. Uh, it's, it's, because the ramp is not used that frequently. When we first bought it, my son used it, you know, probably every day for two weeks. I would say he's been on it once in the past 30 days. And so the, my youngest son is not a skateboarder. So it's really just my oldest son who's 13. The guy was, you know, during the summertime, I'm sure it's going to get used a couple of days a week until they're tired of it. But, um, I will certainly ensure that, you know, the language, and my wife will as well, that they're not being loud or cursing. And as I've said, we're, we want to be good neighbors to all of our neighbors. And, and if they're having any concerns, by all means, we'll address it. If there's times they're outside and they don't want the ramp used, we're happy to work with them.
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wall?
Um, I've got a question from Feldman. So can you, um, can you speak to the location of it? Uh, location of the ramp on your, your property? Uh, oftentimes it, it's the people push the, you know, push the use, they push a lot of these uses against the property law. And, uh, can you just speak a little bit on the siding and the placement?
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, there, there's a, a large open area, um, next to our house. And as you can see, kind of where we put it, there's a, there's a driveway there. We, it was basically placed in an area where it wasn't encroaching on the, the setback line. And we, you know, we didn't want it too close to our neighbors or it was really, site was mostly chosen because it was a flat area. The ramp, uh, is about 16 feet wide and it requires a level ground. So honestly, the, the, the site was chosen just because that was the flattest portion of that, that area. Um, in terms of its, you know, its standoff from the fence, and I think Nathan, um, who may be able to comment on that distance from the fence. I don't have the exact measurements in, in front of me.
Okay. Thanks.
Mrs. Klein, do you have a question?
Um, I have a comment, not so much for Mr. Feldman, but for the group. Um, with 11 and 13 year old boys, I'm surprised to hear that suddenly language is an issue. Um, do you think that it either is or isn't? Um, if they have a pool and a trampoline, um, they're likely outside pretty frequently with or without friends. Um, so I'm surprised to hear that all of the sudden that there's a language issue. Um, I also, I also think it speaks to their neighborliness, the fact that he seems to have gone out of his way to alleviate some of the noise with the expensive additions that he's made, um, to the ramp itself to reduce the impact on his neighbors.
Thank you. Mrs. Klein, Mr. Tahan, do you have a, something?
Yes. This, to Mr. Wall's question, um, the siding of the ramp also is, is in that location because it's outside of the 100 foot Chesapeake Bay preservation area buffer, uh, where they would need to obtain another variance from the CBPA board in order to locate it any closer to the, uh, to the resource, uh, to the water essentially. So, um, it is in a location that is environmentally better, although it does require a waiver of that setback.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Don, this is Don.
I'm sorry, Don. Mr. Horsley, go ahead, Don. I'm going to see you one day, I swear.
Did the applicant say that he was not in agreement with, uh, condition number six, uh, the chain to secure the ramp?
That is correct. Item number six and item number seven, he's not, he, um...
Was he, was he concerned about that for a safety issue with, uh, with a chain there that possibly could not get unhooked before a kid used it and tripped the kid up or something? Is that the reason he was, I mean, I don't want to require something that's not a safe, that's not a safe thing to require. Is that the reason he didn't like that?
Mr. Horsley, he said that it was, um, sliding the chain back and forth around the, over the ramp would damage it, could, could damage it in time to come. Um, and I, like you're saying here, I personally am not in favor of the chain either. That's my opinion.
Yeah. It's a safety thing for the, for the youngsters, looks to me like, because if, if it was, if it was left up for some odd reason and kid started skating and that thing tripped him up, it could, it could hurt him real bad, I would think. So I'd be in favor of eliminating number six myself. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Graham?
Um, and I, and I agree with everything we've heard. Um, and yeah, if it was a swimming pool there or something else, or basketball court, um, you're going to have the same type of language. Um, I mean, it's, it's good that these kids have something to do. It's keeping them busy. Um, I'm okay with removing the condition, uh, for the chain and for the adult supervision. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application or recommend approval.
I'll second.
Motion, oh, second? Okay. Who's, who made the second? I'm sorry.
Mike Inman.
Mike Inman, okay. So a motion for approval by Mr. Graham with, um, eliminating item six and item number seven and the conditions and a second by Mr. Inman. Ready for the vote?
If you're in favor of the motion, say yes. And if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By recorded vote of 10, four and zero against, agenda item number 17 has been recommended for approval with the removal of condition number six and seven.
Okay. Thank you. I think we can go back to item number 13 now. I think Mr. Burdon is unmuted. Maybe?
Yes, sir. This is, uh, the conditioner for Experis Service LLC, a conditional use permit request for a car wash facility located at 4937 Broad Street in the Bayside District. Mr. Burdon, you can start making your comments. Mr. Burdon, we can't hear you.
Is he unmuted?
Yes, he is unmuted. Mr. Burdon, can you hear that? We are not able to hear you. You are unmuted.
I'm concerned he's not there and, uh, that he, uh, disconnected or went off when that, we went through that last application that took us an hour and 15 minutes or whatever it was. Can we call?
Mr. Burdon is having technical issues on his side. Our staff just reached out to him. He is, um, he is there, but we, unfortunately, just can't hear him.
Yes, I called Mr. Burdon's office and he is there. And it was a, a problem with some muting, a muting issue. So, um, he is aware that he's up.
Oh, I can make, we could go to number 18 and come back.
Yes, sir.
Does that sound good? It's 18 and come back.
Yes, sir. The next item for consideration is agenda number 18, the application of Verda Real Estate and Construction, a request for a conditional use permit for a automobile service station located at 4493 Shore Drive in the Bayside District. Mr. Grady Palmer is the applicant representative for this request. Mr. Palmer, please, uh, start by stating your name and you can start your comments. Mr. Palmer, please start your comments. Mr. Chair, would you like to move on to your next item and circle back?
Did, did we try Mr. Burdon again? Mr. Burdon started, commented? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Palmer, can you hear us?
Yeah, while I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Please state your name and begin your comments.
Okay. Sorry for the technical difficulty. Seems to be with attorneys today. Um, my name is Grady Palmer, um, local attorney here representing the applicant, uh, on this, uh, application. Chairman Weiner, Vice Chair Wall, members of the commission and staff. I want to thank you for the opportunity. And I want to thank staff for the recommendation. It's been a pretty meticulous review of this application. As you know, it's in the Shore Drive corridor, Overly District. We've, we've been to the Bayfront Advisory Commission two times. I've received unanimous support, uh, for the design, uh, the layout and also the architecture. Um, I think the result of, of the review process is, is really bringing a very high quality project to the corridor and to, into Shore Drive. Uh, and I'm, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Couple of things I want to note out of the staff report that I think that this redevelopment project is going to be real benefit to, to the corridor, but also being sensitive to, to understanding that there are neighbors nearby. And I've done a lot of these projects where, you know, major corridors that, that, that butt up against, uh, an existing established neighborhood. And we really try to work hard to be sensitive to neighbors and, and to design and, and, uh, address things that, that will, will make a benefit over the current situation. And so a couple of things that the staff report notes that noise items are being moved away from, from residences. And there is a significant enhancement of buffering and landscaping on the property. We've got an eight foot fence that divides the 711 from the, from the neighbors to, to our south. And for the Shore Drive corridor, we're reducing the number of ingress egress points, uh, from three to, to one on Shore Drive. And I think probably significantly, uh, we're reducing the amount of impervious surface. And, you know, those things, we're, we try to, we try to look for those opportunities to make, uh, these, these projects work better for existing neighbors. And I know there's some concern out there about the, uh, the, the gas tanks and, and, and living next door to a gas station. I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. But we're, we, we try to be very sensitive to, to designing these things in a way that can, that can coexist with neighbors. As you know, the site is zone B2, so there's, there's significant amount of by right development that can happen on, on the site. We think the conditional use permit process, uh, is a good one. It's particularly in this location, uh, to, you know, shape a project in a way that makes it much more compatible, uh, with its neighbors than, than by right development. Some of the safety concerns, I know that our, our neighbor to the south, uh, has expressed concerns about living next to a gas station. I'll tell you, I think that these are, these are, are some of the most highly regulated of all the, the business commercial uses. Uh, I know there's, there are annual inspections and state regulations. And I, I think that I can stand here before the commission and say that this is a safe operation. I do want to note, there was discussion about the, whether there are other, uh, service stations, 711s, Wawa's in Virginia Beach that are adjacent to residential. Note to the commission that just to our west down Shore Drive at the Pleasure House Road intersection, there is a Wawa, uh, that is, if, if it's not closer than, than we are, it's about the same location, immediately adjacent to residential. And that, I don't know of any issues, uh, with that. And I mean, maybe staff can address that in a little bit more, um, detail. But I think this is a very good project that we're bringing to you. I'm proud to be, to be a part of it. I did want to note that I have with me on the phone today, um, Jeremy Yee with Kim Lee Horn, who can answer any engineering questions that you have. Uh, we've got Brett Skinner with the applicant Verdad, who is the developer, and then Ashley Bodnar, who was with, uh, 711 Corporate, who can answer any questions, uh, from, from the 711 end. But I, I want to thank you for the time and I'll stand by for any questions that you've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Mr. Wall?
The next speaker is Julie Jimenez, followed by Enrique Jimenez. Ms. Jimenez, please start by saying your name for the record and begin your comments.
Good day, everyone. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good day. Um, thank you for allowing me to express, um, a concern. But I want to start to saying that, um, I not opposed to any development in Virginia Beach City. I am a resident... City. I am a resident of Virginia Beach City since two thousand and eight. I'm very happy living here and I just wanted to share with you all my concern as having. I am the owner of the house that right beside the project that you have for this gas station. And I am very concerned because I live here with my mother. She is eighty-six years old. I have my husband who have pre-existing condition. He is, have a heart condition, which he have problems breathing sometimes and he was hospitalized twice due to this condition. As I received a letter about a development close to my house, first thing that called my attention was a gas station. I think it's sixteen pumps. And that, for me, is a high risk for my family. We are less than fifteen, fifty feet from this location. And I've been going around checking on gas station whole day up then. And I can see that there's no gas station so close to a resident. I start doing research to see if I am, I'm not correct, if I'm wrong now. And I find several information that you might be very aware of, that there are high concerns of having gas station close to neighborhoods because of the harmful to human health that released from the gas station during the vehicle fueling or underground storage tanks. There are compounds in the, in the, in those fuel that can, that are adverse to help effects that can cause nausea, cancer, anemia, and even increase the hostility and infections. With what we have lived in two thousand and twenty with all this pandemic, I believe that probably right now the codes or for how we build a gas station close to a resident might have to revisit and change. Here in Virginia, I, I believe the code or the law for having that gas station is, cannot be more, less than fifty feet, which I am, less than fifty feet from this location. But if you do more research, you will find that there's many, many environmental health groups that have bring to the attention of the cities or planning commission that a gas station should not be less than three hundred feet from a resident. I also not understanding why the city would allow a gas station when this gas station would be just right in front of another gas station, less than two hundred feet. There's another, that's no call. We have in Shore Drive and Greenwood Road. We have another gas station, less than four hundred feet. Then we have the Kroger and we have the Wawa. So the need of a gas station is not the reason.
Ms. Jimenez, that is all the time you allowed. The next speaker is.
Hold on, hold on a second, Wall. I want to see if anybody has any questions for her. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Enrique Jimenez.
Yes, I, this is Julie Sagimenez and I will be speaking and be off on my husband. He's here with.
Mr. Chair, would you like her to speak on behalf of her husband?
That's fine.
All right, Ms. Jimenez, please start your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, so as I was saying, I don't see the need of another gas station. I, as I say when I started, I am not in oppose a development. I'm here because I want us together to find a resolution for my family. My family are hardworking people and we choose this house because of the safety that this oath was given and the peace in the area. Having a gas station here twenty-four, seven will take away that, will take away that, that safety that we had during all these twelve years living here. Alcohol and sales crime, it will increase. Selling alcohol close to my house will increase crime. There's the insurance of the house is, would raise for me. We are hardworking people. We can afford getting in more, in our financials to be, have to be taking over our packet, packet to pay more insurance. I have a teenager here who is happy living. She's a, a, a high school student. She have been in the principal list because I, I provide to her safety and peace. I want to urge you to please not to approve this unless there's something that can help me to maintain my safety. Having a wall there is not, is not an option. That will not mitigate the, will not mitigate the, the, the risk that my family and my help, my eighty-six years old mom, my husband with a heart condition. With all what happened with this pandemic, we have to revisit how we do things because this gas station can harm over, over health. And I, I beg you, please. And it, well, I, I had a, a person that was arrested with DUI over my, my house because he hit my car turning from Shore Drive to Greenwood Road, hit my car. We have weeks trying to, to get a, to get another car. And the anxiety that that brings to us because we was afraid someone else come and hit our house. Bringing a gas station close to my house, you're bringing back that, that worry to me, my family. So I ask you, please to review very good this and think about my family. Same way when you close your door and you go to your bed and you are safe, I want you to think on my family the same way that my, my mother eighty-six old, my son who is a health worker right now, he, he, he live with me because it's, it's going to college and, and to help him with his, to not to have, to help him with his college and let him live with her. And he have to go every morning and he work in the unit for coffee. I ask that you allow him to have the peace with him.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Palmer, are you, I'm sorry, do we have any more speakers?
No, I believe those are all the speakers. The remaining speakers are on the applicant's team. So I will turn back to you.
Mr. Palmer, did you have any rebuttal?
No, Chairman, I'll stand by for questions.
Okay, any questions? Mrs. Oliver?
Mr. Palmer, would you, do you mind addressing her concerns as far as the proximity of everything to her house, please?
Yes. So the, we meet all the state regulations. You know, the state highly regulates the placement of, of underground storage tanks. It meets all the distance requirements. Your staff has reviewed it. We certainly understand the concerns. But just looking around the area, there are very similar situations not far down Shore Drive where, you know, the, these things are in close proximity and maybe even closer proximity at the intersection of Shore Drive and Pleasure House Road with no issues. And, you know, I think if you look in a wider scope through Hampton Roads, you're going to find a, a lot of these that have been approved over the years with no issues, no, no real, no impacts to community or individual health.
Any other questions? Mr. Costin?
Yes, for the attorney, does not the, the, the gas, I mean, the, the store portion of the business, is that what's closest to her house? And does not, not provide some type of buffer between where gas is being pumped versus right up against her house?
Yeah, so her, the building is on the east side of the property. So she, she, her property is separated by a buffer, like a fifteen-foot buffer yard. I believe it's fifteen feet. But most importantly, there's a, there's an eight-foot fence that we have run the entire southern property line between our property and, and the houses that are just to our south. And so there'll be a significant amount of landscaping and, and fencing that will, that will separate the properties that don't currently exist right now. So I think that alone will, will provide a major buffer and separation from the gas pumps, which are probably about, I'm trying to measure, see the measurement on the site plan. But I'd say it's at least fifty feet off the property line, separated by a significant amount of landscaping and an eight-foot fence. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Wall?
This, this question's for Mr. Palmer. And maybe it's, you know, we see the, the land use out there right now, but it almost appears that that's the lot that's on the corner that's, you know, adjacent to Ms. Jimenez is, was formerly a gas station. I mean, I, I could be wrong, but, you know, there's some historical buildings, you know, like that one, that the new facility almost looks like it, it may not have any bearing on the application, but it's just of interest, you know, it's kind of interesting that, you know, one time it may have been a gas station right there. Mr. Palmer could speak on that if he has any knowledge of it. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I do not. I don't recall what this is. For as long as I've been going up and down Shore Drive, it's been a car dealer. So I'm not exactly sure what predated that dealer show.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? All right, we're going to close this and Mr. Redman?
Chairman, the, so look, these are two commercial properties in a commercial corridor that are very much unloved. If you go to page seven of the staff report on this application, what you see is a very, there you go, thank you, is a very, is a very detailed, very well-thought-out site plan that would, by any stretch of the imagination, be a very substantial upgrade to the built environment and in a very appropriate place. Shore Drive is a big roadway. If gas stations and gas pumps and underground storage tanks were dangerous, we'd have all dropped dead by now. And all of the people who work at them would have dropped dead by now. They are not inherently or intrinsically dangerous in any way. And nor do they cause crime. And so I don't, I just, I don't understand, very frankly, the, you know, that assertion. This is by all accounts, you know, a very appropriate and positive application. And I'm certainly going to support it unless anybody else has any comments. So I'm going to make a motion in just a minute.
Any other comments?
I've got one other comment. Would the developers be adverse to maybe installing some, some bollards along those parking area next to the house?
We would have to ask Mr. Grady that information, that question. Mr. Grady, are you still?
Yeah, we would certainly be acceptable, would be willing to do that. Okay.
I, I would like to make a statement if I could. And probably two years ago, we approved a seven-eleven just like this, a half mile from my house. And it's in a residential neighborhood and the store, the gas pumps and everything else are just as close to the houses as they are here. It's being built right now, as a matter of fact, and it's making the area look so much better than what it was there before. So I personally, like Mr. Redman says, I don't see a health hazard. There's this so highly regulated. They have to be checked. And Mr. Costin, Costin told us about during the informal about how the groundwater and everything else is, alarms will go off if something happens. So personally, I'm, I'm going to be in favor of this.
Mr. Redman?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application.
Actually, I've got a couple of things before we.
Of course.
Yeah, sorry. And, you know, I'm not opposed necessarily either. I think that there probably should be something in the zoning ordinance that, that provides a buffer between a use like a gas station. I think there are studies out there. So I don't want to discount Mrs. or Ms. Jimenez's comments concerning health hazards or that it's, you know, people dropping dead. I think it, you know, long-term effects of living next to a gas station, you know, there may be some. And I'm not necessarily a person to, you know, stay one way or the other, but there's studies. I, I believe out there that, you know, she has reviewed and that, that are available. So, but she did bring up a good point that I think that the city should look into potentially, you know, revising or, you know, reviewing their ordinance concerning the location of fueling stations, you know, next to residential properties. You know, in this case, there's a buffer, you know, statistics, statistics are very good, you know, and incompatible with the Shore Drive corridor. So I'm in, I'm in favor of it, you know, for those, for those reasons.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Costin, I have a question for you. Instead of actually installing bollards in those locations, what about just the parking bumpers that go on the ground and the cars will, you know, when the wheels hit, the car will stop. You've got a pretty long distance between those parking spaces and the wooden fence after the buffer goes in. If a car goes through that, I don't think anything, the bollards aren't going to stop it, I don't think.
Well, my thought process was that you could see that the actual parking spaces are what abuts to her house. And that might give her some comfort at a minimal expense because a parked car, if you floor it, will jump that little bumper in front of the car. But the bollards are usually three, three feet deep maybe and would give you a little bit more protection. But I'm, but I'm going to support it.
Okay. Mr. Redman, you made a motion. Did you want to amend anything on that motion?
No, you know, I would, I, you know, obviously he's, they might have to add this to a site plan. And then I, I simply think that's a conversation that, you know, having had this conversation, that seems to me the applicant can address that before city council.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Redman and a second by, who made the second?
Costin.
Mr. Costin, okay. Ready for the vote?
If you're in favor of the motion, say yes. And if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Alcarez?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstlin?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein? Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
And Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By a recorded vote of ten, four, and zero against, agenda item eighteen has been recommended for approval.
Okay, let's, we want to go back and try number thirteen one more time?
Could I interrupt you for one quick second just for some clarification?
Sure you can.
This is Carolyn Smith. Was that with bollards to be placed along that, the parking spaces along that southern property line? Was that with that new condition or not?
No, I don't believe, that condition did not make it in there.
No, there was, there was no new condition. The applicant's going to, going to adjust things before city council.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am. Wall, do you want to try number thirteen? Go back to thirteen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We are back to item number thirteen for record, expert service LOC. Mr. Verdon, are you, can you hear us? Please start by stating your name and make comment.
Yes, sir.
So if you, Eddie, if you mute any other devices in the room, that will eliminate that feedback.
All right. I turned the computer off. That was probably the source.
Okay, that's looking better, Eddie. Thank you.
All right. First of all, before I get started, let me apologize to the commission and for any speakers. As most of you know, I'm not technologically very adept, and apparently there's a problem with the speaker on this new laptop they got me. So, all right. Chairman, members of the commission, Eddie Badon, Jimmy's attorney representing Expert Services LLC. This is an application by the owners of this property who own A&amp;G Auto Sales. The property is owned, unconditional B2 general commercial district, which as all of you know, permits scores of by right, commercial and retail uses. Some of those uses are commercial kennels, animal shelters, childcare centers, eating and drinking establishment, food takeout, liquor stores, all manner of personal service businesses, wine tasting rooms, all manner of retail uses and beverage manufacturing. Almost seven years ago, my client leased this property to Forever Home, a large dog rescue, large dog rescue operation, which was a commercial kennel use. It operated here until September of 2019. The kennel housed scores of large dogs, mostly pit bulls, in the structure and the fenced rear yard. Frankly, they were far from a stellar tenant, and I can attest to that because I was in this, in the building. They defaulted. The building was unbelievably bad shape, terrible feces everywhere, lot of barking dogs. And we are certain that the residents across Broad Street and in the vicinity were happy when my client was finally able to retake possession of the property from the tenant. When my clients regained possession, they had to expend over $40,000 in interior repairs and exterminating services and cleanup in and around the structure. My clients still have to paint the exterior of the structure, which is planned for this year, and the roof will need to be replaced in a few years. My clients were approached by another commercial kennel operator about leasing the property for a kennel and a doggy daycare. However, my clients felt, given their experience with Forever Home, that they should go in a quieter and cleaner direction. In addition, the circumstances that they are dealing with, with a rented space at the west end of Broad Street that they have used for detailing for some time, have pushed them to relocate. Unconditional B2 zoning exists along the entirety of the south side of this section of Broad Street. To the west of the site is a large chain length fence enclosed vehicle storage yard. To the south is another chain length fence, fence enclosed storage yard for jet skis, motorcycles, and some vehicles, along with structures housing repair and maintenance facilities for motorcycles and jet skis, as well as the Rising Sun boat repair business. To our east is an undeveloped B2 commercial parcel. With the exception of the structure on my client's property, there are no structures located and adjacent, adjacent to the south side of Broad Street in this block that are remotely residential in character, nor can any property, including my client's property, be used residentially. Also, there are no other similar properties on this block that host two very large live oak or oak trees, excuse me, not live oak, oak trees, as my client's property does. Unfortunately, the wording of our, excuse me, the washing of motor vehicles on a commercially zoned property, which is not and cannot be occupied as a residence such as this property, requires a conditional use permit under Section 228.1 of the zoning ordinance for quote "car wash facilities." The term or designation "car wash facilities" is not defined in our CZO. Webster's includes a definition of facilities as a plant or installation. And subsection B of Section 228.1 of our zoning ordinance provides a minimum of three off-street parking spaces for automobiles shall be provided for each car wash space within the facility unless otherwise provided in the condition of the use permit. Clearly, this code section is dealing with commercial for fee car wash facilities. It is likely that the required characterization of my client's desired use of his property of a, as a car wash facility has caused confusion in this case, as there is no public available, publicly available facility for the washing of cars for a fee being proposed for construction or installation on this property, no additions to the property at all. There is no public retail car wash component of this use on this property as proposed by the owners. I want to make that very, very clear. The owners solely desire to hand wash and detail their own vehicles, which they sell on their auto sales lot. As staff is also fully aware, no more than two employees will be on the site. One will wash cars with a hose, one at a time, and hand chamois dry the car. The other is in the garage structure that opens up to the back of the property, where he will be detailing the already washed and dried car in the garage. And this is not visible from Broad Street. A car will not be washed at any point in time or detailed prior to 9:00 AM or after 5:30 PM, Monday through Saturday, and it won't happen every day. And no more than six to eight cars max can be done per day. No cars will be parked in front of, beside, or in the road around the property, Broad Street or the Stub Street that will be accessing the back of the, of the property. There's no signage that will be placed on the property. There will be no traffic generation other than the moving of the limited number of vehicles from the, the car lot to the site for washing and detailing and back, one or two at a time. Frankly, the traffic generation won't exceed the average generation of a residence on the property. And while we ask for the ability to park two employee cars, the two employee cars in the existing front parking lot, which is a commercial lot, even though it's small, on the site, and four cars being washed and detailed in the back for a total of six, staff recommended only four on the entire site, which my client can deal with and we, you know, will work within that limitation. This is obviously an interim or holding pattern use, but as strictly conditioned, and I would absolutely characterize these nine conditions in your report as strict, and if you want to add some more, we'll listen. I frankly cannot envision a use of this B2 zone property, which is fronting on and only accessible from Broad Street, that could be less impactful to the residential uses on the north side of Broad Street than this one. If the site were to be redeveloped as opposed to this adaptive reuse of the existing property, the two large oak trees and the existing converted former residential structure would be removed, and there would be far, far more traffic, including trips by persons not familiar with the area, looking for whatever business or businesses were on this property. And that would occur only using Broad Street. We respectfully but clearly disagree with staff's recommendation. We do, however, appreciate both Wa and Carolyn Smith working with us, and we are in agreement with all of the proposed conditions. We would request that the commission recommend approval of this use as strictly limited by the staff's conditions, and I will be happy to stand by for questions and appreciate being given the opportunity to, to respond to any opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Badon. Is there any questions for Mr. Badon? Mr. Alcarez?
Yeah, Mr. Badon, I guess we heard some opposition on emails, but what, the noise, there was a noise factor that was brought up. Are you saying they're doing everything inside as far as the detailing, the vacuuming and all that?
Correct. Everything is done in the garage other than the exterior hand wash with a hose and hand chamois to dry the vehicle. And then the vehicles move in the garage, and all of the detailing work is within the garage, and the only opening is to the south, towards the Boulevard.
Any other questions? Mr. Wall?
So what, what is being done in the back with the gravel, gravel lot? And you may have mentioned that, and maybe I just missed it, but, because you can't even get in the garage currently.
I'm sorry. That's a very good question, Mr. Wall. The back, they, they will have to do a partial site plan. They're going to have to put in BMPs, most likely be bio retention beds, but they, the back of the property, because that's where the, that's where the dogs, you know, tore it up. Again, they were mostly pit bulls, and they dug and dug and dug. The back, the back of the property is a nightmare in terms of the ground. I mean, and they will, they will have to make improvements to the back of the property per a site plan, which will have to be submitted and reviewed to include BMPs for the, you know, minimal amount of water, but they still have to, have to capture the water. One of the conditions requires that. So the back of the property will have to be refurbished, and that will probably involve some manner of fill, whether it's sand, a combination of sand and gravel, but that's, that's to be determined through the review process. We certainly want to minimize to the greatest degree possible the amount of stormwater runoff period, but that, that's something that will be handled during the site plan review. But that's an, it's an excellent question.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Badon? Okay. Wa, do we have any more speakers?
We have two speakers registered for this item. The first speaker is Lorraine Samco, followed by Mabel Burgar. Ms. Samco, you have ten minutes to speak after you represent the civic league. Please start by stating your name for the record and begin your comments.
Lorraine Samco, and I am the president of Aragona Village Civic League. And I have a prepared statement. Everybody can hear me? Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. I appreciate your time today and your service to our city. I am Lorraine Samco. I am the president of Aragona Village Civic League, and I'm a 30-year resident of Serene Avenue in Aragona Village. Aragona Village is opposed to allowing the property at 4937 Broad Street to be granted the requested variance to convert the property to a car wash. Residents have weighed in to their civic league through our media communications via email, Facebook, Nextdoor, and Zoom meetings. The majority of residents, including 90% of the responses to an online poll, being no, a car wash is not the right business to locate at 4937 Broad Street. Fill your vote to preserve our neighborhood and protect our residents from further egregious encroachment of this section of our community must be no. Aragona Village was conceived and brought to life by John Aragona in the late 1950s. He envisioned comfortable homes at modest prices, homes for families, and where the children in those families can safely play, and with streets that are vehicle and pedestrian safe for residents. We are the first planned development on the western side of the city and boasted over 3,000 homes at inception. First-time buyers, many returning after military service abroad, traveled on mud and dirt roads to see the new models named after ducks, such as the teal and the mallard. Today, Aragona Village still captures much of the charm of its beginnings. Most of our families are basic working middle class, and our neighborhood is still one of the most affordable for single-family homes in the city. We are in the midst of change as the initial owners are passing the torch and a new generation takes root. Many of our homes are on the market now, first purchased by renovation buyers, and are sold with beautiful updates, thus increasing our value. We now have 2,989 homes, according to the City of Virginia Beach tax records, making us the second-largest neighborhood in the city. And we are consistently in the top 10 of real estate tax revenue produced out of 856 neighborhoods, based on calculations and estimates derived from the City of Virginia Beach Real Estate Assessor's annual reports posted from 2016 to 2020. We are normally fourth, fifth, or sixth, which is not bad for a 60-year-old neighborhood. The origins of how Broad Street, mainly between Rose Marie and South Gate, have become commercial on its Virginia Beach Boulevard side is still being researched. It is also still in question that the city actually posited a plan at some point to protect residents by modifying access to Broad Street and installing screen fencing and shrubbery to buffer the commercial encroachment. But evidence to date indicates that the intention and initial design for both sides of Broad Street, from Rose Marie to South Gate, was residential housing. Several residences on the commercial side of Broad Street remain and are matching the original homes still existing. Additionally, it would be unusual to build homes front-facing to either the front or back of commercial property, yet 15 homes do just that. The current commercial environment along Broad Street consists mainly of secondhand car dealerships. Neighbors have had problems for years with these car dealerships, having no concern for our neighborhood and the residents. They speed and test drive vehicles, load and unload commercial trucks daily, and park their excess auto inventory into the side streets, causing traffic hazards for residents and dangerous walking conditions for children. And yes, neighbors in Aragona Village Civic League have brought this to officials' attention. And the offenders clean up their act for about a week and then return their shameful abuse. We requested report, excuse me, let me carry over the classroom. Per requested report obtained from Virginia Beach Police Department, there were 292 speeding in excess of 25 mile per hour traffic violations in the corridor of Broad Street, Rose Marie, Dorset, and Gene Street in a three-year period. This is directly the three-block radius across from the applicant's property. Many rain roads do not see that much activity. And through the years, the applicants which were involved in ownership of some of the adjacent car dealerships, along with the other car dealerships, have nothing, have done nothing to permanently remedy this egregious behavior. It is likely, if the owner is given this inch, he will take a mile. This is, to refresh your memory, the location that was leased to a pet rescue in 2017, in which an adopted pet killed a family member in the Pembroke Manor neighborhood into which it was adopted. It is reasonable to believe that the owner will begin parking even more cars onto the property and into the neighborhood interior if this plan is allowed. As well, we suspect attempts will be made to lease or acquire the adjacent vacant lot to continue expanding their dealerships into the neighborhood interior. A final concern is the environmental excrement oozing from a car wash, as well as the additional traffic that will come from such a proposed entity. It is troubling to residents and their right to equality of life and quiet enjoyment of their property. And yes, we are well aware of the type of car wash facility being requested, and it is not welcomed. We would welcome a low-staff, no-foot traffic, by a clean and passive business at the location sensitive zone for business use. We do not accept the current proposal for a car wash and ask that you support our residential neighborhood of Aragona Village and vote no to the proposed variance. I thank you again for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions? Okay. Wa, next speaker, please.
Last speaker is Mabe Burgar. Ms. Burgar, please start by stating your name for the record, and you may begin your comments.
Hello. My name is Burgar Mabe, and I reside on Rose Marie Avenue. I'm here to speak about my disapproval of this plan for a car wash. For myself and my neighbors, understand that the side of Broad Street is commercial, even though the buildings look exactly like my house, where my two daughters and wife live with me. We live in a tri-level house, just like a good portion of Aragona resides. A few houses on that side of Broad Street still have families living in them, and they are 5009, 5005, and 5001, which is between Grenfell and, or Grenfell and Dorset. Expert Services is already located a block away from A&amp;G Auto and an actual steel-framed commercial building alongside other businesses further down Broad Street. So why move into a house further away, may you ask? While most of my neighbors ask that same question, per the site, this, this plan's new location has six existing parking spots which face residential houses. Expert Services currently have, location only has parking facing Virginia Beach Boulevard. Per detailed prescription on the application, the last sentence they stated was, "The facility will be operated in a first-class manner, and only operational, ready-to-drive, ready-to-sell vehicles belonging to A&amp;G will be..." While most of my neighbors ask that same question, per the site, this, this plan's new location has six existing parking spots which face residential houses. Expert Services currently have, location only has parking facing Virginia Beach Boulevard. Per detailed prescription on the application, the last sentence they stated was, "The facility will be operated in a first-class manner and only operational ready-to-drive, ready-to-sell vehicles belonging to A&amp;G will be on the property at any given time." To me, that sounds like dealer overflow parking. We have already lost houses on that side where dealers have started tearing down houses, tearing down other big trees, just like the lawyer states that the two oak trees that are currently on this location. And they've paved over lots and, or put gravel down to make extra parking for cars. We fought those businesses for years, and we did win one where they put up fences and bushes right behind the Volvo dealership, which is adjacent to this location. At that part of Broad Street is an eyesore, and we do not need another active business with a consistent supply of vehicles, trash, noise, traffic, environmental issues. There is a vacant lot next door, as Lorraine stated, that my daughter actually plays at, and so does a lot of other residential children on this side of Aragona, because we do not have many green spaces. And I ask you to please, please say no to this. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Last speaker. All right. Wa, that's the last speaker?
That's right.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Badon, are you still unmuted?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of the comments, the ones that at least weren't slanderous, were, you know, actually, I'm going to agree with a lot of them. What needs to be made as clear as I can is that my clients are, are moving to this location because the facility that they're currently renting in a building of multiple facilities has other businesses that are doing not only detailing, but they're doing car modification work, and they park everywhere. My clients have never parked and do not park any of their vehicles in any public right-of-way. And, and because of these other people who are working in other suites, flex suites in this other building, they have cars parked in their three parking spots some of the time. It's been a nightmare with some of the other tenants, and that is a, we're a tenant in that building, and they want out of there. And that's why they want to use this property in a manner that truly will be far, far less impactful than any business use would take place in this property. And that's all that can take place on this property. And I know you all recognize that fact. My clients do not operate the way other businesses down there are operating, and my clients do not ever park their cars in any public right-of-way. And obviously, you all have read the conditions attached to this. No vehicles can be parked in front of the car, in front of this property. None can be parked in the street, only four onsite at any given time. And it is, it, there won't be anybody coming and going there other than the employees bringing the car from the, the for-sale lot here to be washed and detailed and back. It's not a parking lot. It's not a maintenance facility. They have a separate maintenance facility elsewhere, and it's on Newtown Road. And there is no use for this property other than to store company documents, records in the building, and the very extremely limited use to wash and detail by hand cars behind the building in the fenced-in area. And that is it. And to suggest it's going to create traffic and all the hazards and the, and what have you, I, I would hate to be the gentleman's daughter playing next door when all those pit bulls were there. And we agree, we, we tried for years to, my clients tried for years to get them out of the property. We're not, you know, we are, it's unfortunate that that's, you know, who it was leased to by my clients. They thought it was a good thing that they were doing to rescue dogs. But when they were approached by putting another, although certainly not of that caliber, facility in there for doggy daycare and a kennel, it felt, you know, we've had enough. I can't imagine that the people across the street would want to see another kennel there or any number of other uses that are allowed by right. This gives the neighborhood the opportunity, they can put their eyes on it and their ears on it and see day in and day out that it is not going to be impactful for them. And if you want to put a condition on it, that staff review it for compliance, you know, within a year or something like that, we're fine with that, too. We're trying to be a good neighbor, very good businessman, who are not trying to impose and feel badly for the imperious entity, the forever home facility. But they didn't hold that, they were just, missing the home, home, Forever Home was a tenant. My clients, you know, didn't have anything to do with their, with their operations whatsoever, and they had a hard time getting them out. Be happy to answer any questions about the specifics of the conditions. I can't imagine that any of the conditions that are attached to this application don't already clearly address the concerns that were expressed.
Sounds good. Hold on one second, Mr. Redmond. Staff, Mr. Wa is trying to join us back again. If you could try and see if you could bring him in. He's offline. Mr. Redmond, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Badon. Mr. Badon, can you address the comment about cars ready for sale? The meaning of that?
Just to me, no car that is brought to this site to be hand-washed and detailed can be in any state of disrepair. It cannot be, you know, a car, because this is not a repair facility where no work is going to be done on any car. So that's, that was the wording that was put in there because we want to make it clear that this was in no way a facility that will be used to modify a vehicle or repair a vehicle or do anything to the vehicle other than to simply hand-wash the hose and detail it in the garage. That's it. Just like, you know, a lot of us, a lot of residents do on weekends of their own cars. Obviously, it's a little bit more than that, but frankly, compared to all the other uses that this property could be put to, I, I just have a hard time that there's any less impactful use and one that would continue to maintain those trees and that structure for the, for the future, not necessarily forever. But my client has no intent and nor could they attempt to put a car dealership on that piece of property or that piece of property and the one in the, that he's talking about that we don't own, that I believe is owned by Cycle World. But anyway, we're, we're, we, we are trying, and with all the landscaping that, I mean, he talked about the landscaping in front of the, the car lot that Volvo has that goes all the way out to the edge of Broad Street, you know, the staff's requiring us to do the same thing in front of this, in front of this structure. And again, no cars, based on these conditions, we parked in the parking lot that exists in front of this structure on this property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Inman, do you have a question for Mr. Badon?
I do. I'm thinking maybe the question Mr. Redmond had, had to do with selling cars on this site. And the conditions do not prohibit having vehicles marketed on this site. Number two, condition two says there'll be no more than four vehicles parked on the subject property at any one time, and in no case shall the number of vehicles brought to the site for detailing exceed 10 per day. Right, so perhaps we need to add a, to a, to that condition, and the vehicles shall not be shown for, as a sale on that ticket or site, so that this does not become a sales location, as opposed to storage and preparation location. Is that suitable?
Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Sure, I can. Go right ahead, Mr. Badon.
First of all, that would necessitate a conditional use from it for motor vehicle sales, which does not, not the case here, but we have no objection to any condition that you wish to place on there about the fact that no cars will be offered for sale, marked for sale, and there will be no markings whatsoever on the vehicles. These have to be licensed, operable, ready to be sold. So any, any condition you all wish to place on there in that regard, we are fully, in full agreement with. It's not, not a conditional use from it to sell vehicles, and I would never have even dreamed of trying to put that on this, on this property on this street. Thank you.
Mr. Graham, do you have a question?
I, I do. Mr. Badon, is your client intending to do anything with the exterior of the building?
Mr. Graham, you kind of broke up on me, but the, the, he, he is going to paint the exterior of the building this year. It hasn't been done yet because he spent the $40,000 fixing the, the interior of the building, and our staff actually has pictures. We sent them some before and after pictures of what this place looked like when they got it back from the Forever Home folks. But yes, the, the building will be, the exterior of the building will be painted this year and if this is, regardless, I believe it'll be painted this year, although if, if this use isn't permitted, it'd be, you know, I'm not sure what use, other than going back to something we talked about earlier. But yes, so we'll paint it this year, and it'll have to be landscaped per the condition all along the front of the property. We propose some foundation landscaping, but if we, if we put the full landscaping across the entire frontage, I don't know that the foundation landscaping would even be visible, but the answer to your question on the painting is yes. If that, if that's all the question was, Mr. Graham, I, it did break up on me.
Yeah, that was my question. Question, it's, obviously, the building is, it's in bad shape. And, you know, for an application like this, I would, you know, normally we would see the applicant doing some major renovations to a building or, or tearing it down and building a new building. This is where, it sounded like they're going to put a coat of paint on it and that's, that's upgraded land, and that, that's kind of what we're getting here.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we, if, if the building were going to be torn down, then, and, and an investment made to, you know, of that nature, then clearly this use wouldn't make any, make any sense on the property. It would be something far more intrusive and far more generating of traffic, given all of the uses that are allowed, that, that, you know, the Planning Commission and City Council, et cetera, don't even have any, and the neighborhood have no say-so over. So I mean, this, this is an attempt to try to maintain, improve it a lot compared to what it was with the Home Forever folks, but to improve it, make it look a lot nicer, and at the same time minimize the use to one that is already present at the, at the west end of Broad Street in a, in a facility that with our moving out, hopefully there'll be some attention given, and it won't be pointed at, at my clients, because, you know, one of the emails I read basically is trying to accuse them of being the source of the problem down there, which is nothing could be further from the truth. And, you know, we haven't done any parking of vehicles on any streets down there. We're operating at a, you know, minimal, with the three parking spaces and the flex suite, you know, doing pretty much the same we're talking about doing here, you know, six to eight vehicles a day, and not necessarily every day, inside the flex suite with the three parking spaces out front, as was described. And we want to get away from there because it is, it is problematic. A lot of what was said, we agree with entirely with regard to down there. But we're trying to get away from that, and we'll be out there on the island. You'll be able to see that we're complying and doing everything that we say we're going to do, and at, at the same time, it's, it's, I believe, such a betterment for this piece of property over, you know, tearing it down, taking out the trees, putting a bigger parking lot in, in a new building of some sort, or, or allowing another daycare, dog facility to go in there. And, and there's already an interest there, but this, this was, we thought, a, the best thing we could do for our own peace of mind, getting away from where they are today and not imposing on the people who've had to live across the street. These, these folks don't, but, and again, I, I, I don't in any way attempt to suggest that there, a lot of their concerns about, you know, some of the things that may be going on at the west end of Broad Street aren't valid. We think they actually are, but we're not a part of that, and we want to make sure it's clear that we're not a part of that, and that's what this will provide, as well as, again, just adaptively reusing the property. But we certainly wouldn't tear the house down and, or the former house down that can't be used as a residence. We certainly wouldn't tear that down, and then you do it for this very, very limited purpose. That'd be something more substantial, clearly.
Mrs. Klein, do you have a question?
Mr. Graham addressed it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Badon? All right, and that is all of our speakers, correct? Mr. Redmond, we're going to send this to you.
Mr. Weiner. First thing let me say is, Aragona is a great neighborhood. I think Aragona is one of the, the greatest potential investment opportunities in the city. So let me just say that. I have lots of friends in Aragona. The great houses, great lots. I could go on and on and on and on and on, so I can't speak enough about Aragona. However, all that said, I, I have to agree with what Mr. Badon said in the sense that I'm having a hard time figuring out what, what would be less impactful than what this application is asking for. A, it is a commercial property. It's Zoned B2, which is the least restrictive commercial zoning that there is. They're talking about six to eight, the, the conditions in the app, that the staff put in the application say not to exceed 10 per day, which means what, one an hour? One in, one tenth of a car an hour that would be coming to the site where only two people would work, they're being washing cars. I wash my car by hand. It is not impactful to any of my neighbors, and none of them complain when I wash my car. So I just, I, I don't understand. I think there may well be a very, a very deep misconception about what's meant by a car washing facility, and this is not an auto bell. It's, it's a, you know, it is simply a private use of a very small number of vehicles in a commercial property, which so far as I can tell has, you know, some very strict limitations that, that make it, you know, you know, extremely unimpactful, if there is such a word. So I, I don't, and, you know, very frankly, I have to tell you, you know, I went over there a couple of times, and I'm well familiar with the street anyway, but it is not that busy. This is not Independence Boulevard as part of Broad Street. So I don't, you know, the idea that, that there are these great dangers that are attached to the idea of a couple of guys washing eight cars a day, I just don't see how that's, you know, even possible. So in any event, I think it's an appropriate use for, you know, for this structure. It's a, you know, it's kind of an oddball. It looks like a house. It was a house, but it's a B2 property on, you know, on a commercial side of the street. I just don't, I just cannot seem to figure out what, what is going to cause any kind of harm with this use, so I'm going to support it.
Sounds good. Any other comments? Mr. Inman?
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. I wanted to ask the staff, is there another, is there any definition of car wash in the zoning code?
The, in the zoning ordinance, you know, there's a bunch of uses that fall under umbrella for a car wash facility, and the detailing services of motor vehicles is under that umbrella, therefore, that's why the request is for a car wash facility. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does answer my question. It's rather curious, but in any event, so therefore, even if, and this is an academic question, I really don't expect this to happen, but assuming that there were no, there was no car washing with water on the, on the, on this property, would it require a use permit? And I think from your last answer, it sounds like, well, if they're doing detailing, it's still a car wash.
That is correct, Mr. Inman.
Pardon?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, I can add just a, a little bit of background. That, that was an interpretation made by my predecessor, Karen Lassley, years ago. So it's one we are bound by.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask this? Oh, I'm sorry, Michael.
Nevertheless, I, I have to say that I think that what's being proposed here is, is, is fine. I, I'm sorry that then, I think a lot of the opposition has been misled by the use of the word "car wash." I think maybe the, does the orange sign that's posted say "car wash"? say car wash?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So therefore they're immediately thinking auto bell. Uh, and, and that's generated all this concern. And there's probably some misconception or misunderstanding on the part of the public that one can create all these conditions, which they have, which basically addresses all of their concerns. And we're using this, this applicant wants to use this facility for very, very strict and base, basic, uh, preparation of vehicles for sale and with washing it on the other side away from Broad Street, uh, and, um, it, and having it's very, very unimpactful, using that word David was struggling with too, um, on the community. Uh, there's just not going to be that much activity here. The parking is limited to four. I'm going to propose a, an additional condition that says that there shall be no sale of vehicles, uh, or for sale signage on any vehicle on the property, which, uh, Mr. Burdon indicated would be fine because he'd have to have a different use permit to do that anyway. But I think that might give some comfort to the citizens that are opposing this, that this is not going to mutate into something that, uh, they're worried about. And, um, I, I think they're very strict conditions on this that Mr. Burdon has gone over. And, um, I think with that additional condition, I would hope that the opposition would be comforted by how restricted the use will be.
Thank you, Mr. Inman. Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Wall?
Um, you know, I, I agree with all that. One thing there was, I think that, you know, I can't speak for the Civic League president or for the Civic League or, or anything about, you know, Aragona, but what it does appear is that they're trying to, you know, improve and maintain a, a strong neighborhood. And it may not necessarily be this one business. And, cause I, I certainly do agree with all the, the low intensity that this business, you know, will provide, but, um, I think that it's, it's more the, the infringement impact of the whole aspect of, you know, what goes on in Virginia Beach Boulevard with car sales, um, you know, operation of, of businesses themselves, you know, infringing into the neighborhood. So that's, that's what I see with this, um, with the opposition, with this application is it's, you know, it's not just this. It's the whole element of the business, um, moving on to Broad Street and to, um, you know, infringing into the neighborhood. So that's all I have.
Mrs. Oliver?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. I don't think, um, from listening to the president of the Civic League, they were under the impression this was an auto bell. They were, um, she stated very clearly when she read her, um, opposition letter that they, they were very clear as far as they understood what the use was going to be. I do have a question for staff. How long has this applicant owned this piece of property?
That would be an appropriate question to ask Mr. Burdon. Ms. Oliver?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Oliver, I know they have owned the property for at least eight years. They may have owned it for longer than that. I know that because of the, um, the leasing of the property to the, um, the dog rescue operation. Um, I, I don't think that they've owned it for, um, you know, for eight, like, 30 years, but I know they've owned it for at least eight and it could, it could be, um, somewhat longer than that.
Great. Thank you. So, um, I appreciate that, Mr. Burdon. Um, so to be honest with you all, we, we were out there and stood around that piece of property. And if the applicant has owned it for that long and has left it in that kind of conditions, I can't, um, I'm gonna have to go with staff on this. One, it is definitely, um, in disrepair and has seemed like it has been in disrepair for some time. And I just, I'm gonna have to support some staff on this one. But thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, Colston. I think the number four condition covers that cars should not be there for sale. It talks about them having to be there waiting, uh, detailing only. Uh, I also think that we're only doing this because the properties are not connected. This is what you would consider an ancillary use, which is a byproduct of being in the business of selling cars and needing to wash them. And normally you don't have to have a conditional use permit to wash cars at a car, I mean, at a dealership. Uh, so I'm gonna support, uh, recommend, I mean, I'm gonna support, uh, approval.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application.
All right. We have, uh, move approval for application. Remember, Mr. Redmond, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Uh, Mr. Colston, do we want to look at any conditions? Mr. Redmond, are we good?
Yeah. Mike, you wanted to add, I'm sorry. Let me get Mike in here. Oh, the, the, I want to add a condition, um, that, uh, that no cars shall be offered for sale on the pro, displayed or offered for sale on the property and no cars shall have, um, any kind of signage, um, advertising them for sale while on the property.
Sounds good.
That's it. That's what I, uh, had suggested.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Redmond and a second by Mr. Colston. We're ready for the vote.
If you're in favor of the motion, say yes. And if you're opposed, say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Colston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
It looks like Mr. Graham's offline.
Okay, I will mark him as absent. Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
No.
Mr. Redmond? Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
No. And Mr. Graham just texted me and said he cannot get back in to vote. So he might need some help.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, we will work with him to do that. Um, Vice Chair Wall?
No.
And Chairman Weiner?
Yes. And just for the record, Mr. Graham is back online.
Okay, Mr. Graham, do you have a vote for this item?
Did, did he hear the?
Did you?
Was he able to hear the motion?
The, the motion was to approve the application with the added condition.
It's no.
He said no? Okay. By a recorded vote of six, four, and four against, um, agenda item 13 has been approved with the added condition that there should be no sale of vehicles on the site and no signage advertising vehicles for sale on the property.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next one, uh, item 22, correct?
That is correct. Item 22, um, the application of Alfred Nico for a conditional use permit for short-term rental located at 11355th Street, Unit A in the Lynn Haven District. The applicant is Gus Nico. Mr. Nico, you have 10 minutes. Please start by saying your name for the record and begin your comments.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody, and, um, thank you to the planning commission for giving me an opportunity, uh, to, um, uh, discuss my intentions. Uh, I've applied for a short-term rental, uh, application. Um, I've lived in Virginia Beach for 30 years. I'm a retired naval officer. Uh, the last decade I've lived in the north end of Virginia Beach. Uh, I've raised my family here. And I only mention that, um, so that, uh, you all know I have the same, uh, intent of, of ensuring that Virginia Beach remains a, a wonderful place to live and raise a family. Uh, with, with, um, uh, my intention is to, on a very limited basis, have the ability to, uh, to rent my home. Um, this is my primary home. It's my only home. And occasionally over the last year or two, I've had occasion to, to travel, uh, for, uh, work and for pleasure. And would like to have the opportunity on a very limited basis to be able to execute short-term rentals in my property. So I'll be brief in my comments, but happy to answer any questions, uh, from the commission or anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? No questions. Mr. Wall, do we, how many? No speaker?
We have one speaker registered for this item. However, staff does not see that individual on the, um, list at this time. So no more speaker.
We have no more speakers. Um, this would be Lynn Haven. Mr. Graham, is he back online? Mr. Graham is not back online. Is, oh, here he comes. Is he coming? Nope.
Mr. Graham is back online.
Is he, Mr. Graham? I think we're gonna have to invest in a new wifi for him. Does anybody have any comments about this short-term rental they would like to share before Mr. Graham comes on?
Um, I've got, I've got one thing and, and it's, um, it's actually for, for staff. And this is, uh, I mean, I'm not opposed to this application. It just brings up a point, you know, at this point, and there's, um, there's Mr. Graham, but, um, you know, for staff, for a conditional use permit, um, you know, they, they run with the land. So, so once the conditional perm, you know, this, this gentleman's, um, you know, interested in, in part-time or, um, you know, occasionally using his property as a, um, as a short-term rental. But, you know, once, you know, there are changes in the future possibly, but, you know, at this point, um, you know, this is in perpetuity. So, you know, one, one thing and, and staff, if you can chime in on this, you know, yes or no, is that, um, this goes, the conditional use permit would just go into, you know, he could sell the house and it, it's still there for short-term rental at this point. Can they, um, can somebody answer, answer that?
So, yeah, it, it, the conditional use permit under the current ordinance would allow it to continue for five years and then can be administratively, uh, renewed.
Right.
If during that time there's an issue or problem, it can be revoked. So if, if he were to sell the house and whoever the new owner is has some issues, um, then it could be revoked. Uh, and this is all under the current ordinance, not even discussing, uh, the, the, the one that's going forth.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have Mr. Graham with us. Mr. Graham, this is your neck of the woods. Item 22.
Yeah, and I missed, and I, and I apologize. Um, I, I missed a great deal of the, uh, presentation. Um, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, any, anyway, I'm, uh, I'm not quite prepared. Um, I, I was off. I lost internet.
Let's let George take over. George is good with this. He uses throat terminals. Listen, George.
So, Mr. Graham, I will say, this is Carolyn Smith, that there was no speaker in opposition. One had signed up, but they did not, uh, they were not still on the line. So you didn't miss any conversation about any opposition. Just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay. And, and it sounds like I missed some of the conversation amongst the, uh, the commissioners. Um, if I could be updated, that would be helpful.
Mr. Graham, we really haven't talked about anything. We're waiting for you. So, um, we did hear that this is his primary residence and he rented out when he's not in town, um, which personally I, I tend to like. Um, he's met all the requirements.
Yeah.
So, uh, I'm gonna support it since there's no opposition.
Yeah. Okay, okay. I thought I, I thought I'd missed more. I was scrambling to try to get back on. I apologize. Um, and, correct or wrong, this, this, if, if we move forward with the overlay districts, this will be in, in overlay district as, as designed today.
That's correct.
That's correct. Um, I, I don't have any opposition to this. If, if there isn't any opposition, uh, I'd like to go ahead and recommend approval.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Graham for approval and second by Mr. Redmond. We're ready to vote.
If you're in favor of the motion, say yes. And if you're opposed, please say no. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Colston?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horstley?
Yes.
Mr. Inman? Mr. Inman?
Mr. Inman is currently not in the, Mr. Inman is currently not in the meeting, Marshall.
Okay, I will mark him as absent. Ms. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
He said yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
And Chairman Weiner?
Yes.
By a recorded vote of nine, four, and zero against, agenda item 22 has been recommended for approval.
Thank you. Then our last item, item number 24.
The last item on the agenda is, uh, Bowlow, the application, uh, Bowlow for a conditional use permit for short-term rental located at 61925th Street in the Beach District. The applicant is Bowlow. Mr. Bowlow, please, um, say your name for the record and make your comment. Mr. Bowlow, can, please make your comment. Mr. Bowlow, please make your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please, um, say your name and, uh, start your comment.
I have my, I have my representative Scott on the line that he want to speak for me. Scott Whit, Whitfield?
Mr. Chair, is that permitted?
Yes, sir. Just please, please state your name for the record before you start your comment, please.
Scott Westfall, Mr. Westfall, please say your name for the record and, um, begin your comment.
Bow. Bow.
Mr. Westfall, we can, we can hear you. So if you'd like to start the comments.
Oh, sweet, guys. I'm so sorry. Can you hear me now? Yep. All right. I apologize very much. Um, thank you, guys, planning commission for your time today. I have to say you guys are marathon endurance runners. So thank you. I know we're last. I will keep this brief. My name is Scott Westfall. I'm an associate broker with Broadside Realty and have been professionally managing short-term rentals and really vacation rentals in Virginia Beach down at the oceanfront since 2010. Um, I'm here today representing Bowlow, owner of 61925th Street. Um, and before I get into the details of his application, I'd love to just give you a little background of Mr. Low. Um, Mr. Low and his family live in Northern Virginia, him, his wife and his children. They also have family here in Virginia Beach. For the last 25 years, Mr. Low and his family have visited Virginia Beach four to five times a year to visit family and to vacation. Um, every time that they've come, they've stayed in short-term rentals or vacation rentals for a week at a time. And it's been their dream to own their own second home that they can one day retire in down at the oceanfront. That dream came to fruition, um, last October when they purchased this property. Um, I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Low after he purchased the property, but I do know that he was aware of the short-term rental conditions and made sure that the property met all of those conditions before he purchased the property. Um, when he purchased the property, he also inherited a long-term lease. So the property is currently So the property is currently being rented long-term through the month of May. Um, and Bow is honoring that. It's granted to, granted the permit to Low's intentions, and that's really what I want to convey to you guys today, with the property is not to profit from it or to necessarily run a business out of it. In fact, their goal is to have a second home that they can visit and to use themselves when they visit family. And then secondly, and on kind of a secondary goal would be to offer the home to other families to allow them to have the same experience, to introduce them to Virginia Beach the same way that they were introduced to Virginia Beach through a vacation home. And ultimately, their goal is in the next 10 years to retire here and to move here. So, um, Mr. Low's thoughts are that it is definitely in his best interest to not make enemies with his neighbors. And in that sense, or in that, um, and in order to comply with city regulations and to really minimize the impact on the neighborhood, Mr. Low has agreed to, um, no events, the seven night, the new conditions, the seven nights, uh, so only one contract in seven nights. And really, Mr. Low's goal would be to only allow seven-night minimum rentals in the summer. And his plan would be to, if any rentals are allowed in the winter, to be monthly because that's the time his family likes to enjoy the property. He also, well, in addition to having family members nearby, will employ, uh, in professional onsite management. So they do plan to market the property and on VRBO, not Airbnb, but only VRBO. They plan to be, um, in communication with guests pre and post their stay and to be able to provide a professional onsite management company with a number for both neighbors and tenants, 24/7 emergency onsite maintenance, as well as, um, response to any kind of issues that neighbors arise. With that said, Mr. Low wishes to honor the neighborhood and to respect the neighborhood. Like I said, they come down here often, will be a part of this community, although they do not live here permanently. Um, they are here often, as I said, to visit many family members in the area. Um, and with that, I would love to answer any questions. I do personally feel that this property meets the requirements and kind of what vacation rentals have been in Virginia Beach for a long time. The goal is not to be a nightly rental or a three-night rental or to really be a profit center, but to be a second home and to be able to offset some of the costs that are associated with that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any questions? No questions? All right, wow, next speaker.
The last speaker on this item is Carrie Chick. Ms. Chick, please start by saying your name for the record before beginning your comments. Ms. Chick, you may begin your comment. Ms. Chick?
Does it show that she's online?
That, that was the last speaker.
She is muted?
Her hand is raised.
Right, and she is muted.
Let's give her just one, let's give her just one minute.
Can you hear us, Ms. Chick?
Hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, please, uh, start your comment. Ms. Chick, please start your comment.
Hello, can you hear me now? No.
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Um, one, I do not want to be the last person holding everyone up from getting home today. And I appreciate the, um, well-thought-out, um, discussion about the new neighbors. And I appreciate some of the obvious, um, I guess, responses to many of our neighbors and myself considerations and concerns. Um, so my name is Carrie Chick. I live on 625th, 62525th Street, the direct neighbor of this house. Um, and I've submitted a letter as well, so there's more detailed information in there. But I also just wanted to make sure that I was giving a little more contextual information in case any of that came up and provide a voice to a name as well. So my main concern is at the end of the day, this application has a different feel than a lot of the other short-term rentals that are in this area. Um, and some of the, some of the concerns have been addressed, but I still have some other ones. Um, one being if you've ever driven by this house, this house is very different than the small cottages that are generally making up the majority of the homes in Old Beach. Um, so I'm questioning whether or not this is setting a precedence for tearing down of these cottages and building up these larger houses that look very similar to the oceanfront houses and creating rental properties from them. And generally speaking, the Old Beach neighborhood is a historic neighborhood that is based around preserving the historic status of Old Beach. And it's the first residential area of the oceanfront resort areas. And it provides new opportunities for new and, uh, redeveloped resort residential areas. So it's, it's, while it is near the oceanfront, it is nestled back far enough that it is a neighborhood. Um, and it doesn't have a lot of tourists that do come back there. So the recent purchase of the house allowed for the current long-term renters to stay there for a period of time before switching over to this new short-term rental, um, application. And at no point, the current owners have ever lived there, despite the fact that they've come and visited, visited the area before. Um, I know the neighbors have said that they've tried to reach out to the owners. Um, and they have yet to reach, uh, back out to us. Um, and that was a little, a little bit of concern, but some of that has been addressed. But one of the areas that we're still concerned about is some of the short-term rental requests that is in the, in the area. So, for example, it says that it's four-bedroom house. This is actually a five-bedroom house and there's a, a four-bedroom house, but there's a apartment below. So is that being rented separately or is that part of the overall rental? If that's the case, then the actual max occupancy needs to be adjusted as well as parking. Parking is also a concern because we have had previous problems and there's been more restrictions put in the area of people parking on the streets and blocking houses and, and just blocking the road in general. And then the other area that I've concerned is around how there is this gonna be enforced for events. While there are other short-term rentals in this area, they're small. They're one to three bedrooms. They fit a family. And generally speaking, it's not gonna be a loud party. This house has four very large areas, um, that are, can, are balconies where people can party outside of that are neighboring vicinities of the houses. And because this is a neighborhood, it echoes. You can hear everything. Um, and so everyone in the area is generally very respectful of the fact that people work the next day, that they have young children, they have, um, bedrooms that are nearby. And the concern is that if you're gonna be renting this out and generally with a vacation mentality, those balconies are amazing. However.
Ms. Chick, that is, um, all the time you allow. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Chair?
Are there any questions? The speaker? Mrs. Oliver?
I'm sorry, I don't have one for the speaker. I have one for staff.
All right, any questions for the speaker? Uh, Mr. Inman? Or Mr. Alcaraz? Whoever?
Okay, um, are you still there?
How is there gonna be regulations on the individuals that are gonna be there? In addition?
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on, ma'am, your time is up and we have some questions for you from the, uh, commission, please.
This area, it's right across the street.
Ma'am, hello, can you hear me? Hello?
There are gonna be monitoring that this is not gonna be a large.
Ma'am, hello?
They're pushing us out.
Can you? Ma'am, can you hear me? Hello? Is she on? Hello, ma'am, are you there?
She is on, Mr. Chair, but, uh, at least she.
She cannot hear us?
She can't hear us.
Mr. Alcaraz, do you like to make a comment or you have a question?
I just wanted to know where she lived. I think she said she lived next door. And does she live in a duplex or a single family? I was just gonna see where she lived.
I apologize, I couldn't hear the question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Chick, uh, you said you live next door. So if you're facing the house on you on the left or the right, are you in a single-family house? Are you in a duplex?
I am in a single-family house on the left.
Okay.
Mr. Inman, do you have a question?
Yes, I'd like, uh, the speaker to go back to her comment about you trying to reach out to the owner and wasn't successful. Can you elaborate on that?
I apologize, is that a question for me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Ms. Chick, that was a question for you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I, I did not reach out because there wasn't contact information. That was in reference towards other neighbors stating that they've reached out, um, to them and did not get a response.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Chick? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Did the applicants, um, speaker wanted to make any more comments or rebuttal?
Yeah. Yes, I would, I would like to, to adjust a few of her concerns, um, if possible. Uh, I, I under, we fully understand your concerns and really do want to address that. The, the property is in the tax records a four-bedroom. And I do know the fifth bedroom that you're, the fifth room you're talking about. We addressed this with the planning, um, department and the staff, um, when we were going through the application and it needed to meet what the tax records say. And we have agreed to keeping it to two people per bedroom. So the max occupancy of adults would be eight total. Um, so it's a four-bedroom and to that, so to the, to just address the concern of what will be used that space. It will not be used for additional guests. We're not looking to pack the house. Um, we truly keep, the lows are truly looking for a family. Uh, also on the parking, we, if you can look at the, the survey, we only added four spots, but there is an additional space for another spot, and don't hold me to it, in the driveway, as well as two spots in the garage. And I can't remember the specifics on the garage right now or where that actually is at. But we, I do address that. We do not plan on using any kind of street parking or permits, um, from the city to give to guests, only the parking in the driveway. Um, and finally, to the, the, on, on just addressing how tenants act and we can't control guests, but I, I firmly believe that communication is key. And that's why the lows want to be a part of the process and, and communicating with the guests on the front end of what their expectations are with the house, how the house is supposed to be handled, and also letting them be aware that this is a neighborhood that they also will be a part of. Um, so to address that, I think the lows just want to make sure that they are communicating that to the guests and it will be clear to them the expectations that are set.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? No questions? Okay, that was our last speaker, wow, correct? All right, we will close this. Thank you. We will close this to the public and open it up amongst ourselves. I think, Mrs. Oliver, did you have a question you wanted to ask staff?
No, I, well, I guess I can. I'm not sure I understand what the fifth bedroom is. It is, is it a, a separate apartment or is it a fifth bedroom?
Um, I can answer that. It actually, according to the assessor's office, is not considered a, a bedroom. So it's a study den, essentially. It's not actually a fifth bedroom. So we were able to work that out when he submitted his application. According to the city assessor's records, it doesn't meet the definition, um, of a bedroom, which is why we have it as four-bedroom. And so it is a den, study.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Alcaraz? You're unmuted, you're muted.
I like, Mr. Graham, my, uh, I'm having trouble too, so just bear with me. Um, I have received some opposition. Uh, my concern is that it's not, um, in our future plans of where we want to have the, uh, short-term rentals. And because of that, um, I've got some reservations about it. I wanted to hear from the other commissioners, their thoughts, but other than the next door, Ms. Chick, I've gotten a couple of emails. But, um, I guess my concern is voting on this with knowing what's coming down the pipe for this area in the, uh, more or less a residential, R5S, a residential district. But I'd like to hear from the other commissioners.
Mr. Inman?
Uh, thank you. First, a question for staff. It looks like the little map in our material shows a number of other existing short-term rentals in the immediate area or applications pending that. Is that, am I interpreting that right? Staff?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I, I've got a lot of concern about this particular one. And as soon as I, I saw it, and I want, especially when I saw the parking plan, which of course does meet the requirements. But, uh, immediately envisioned how many people could be there, not just the visitors. And I know the restriction is on, uh, staying there overnight, it could only be eight. But even so, uh, I, I just don't see this fitting into this neighborhood. I see potential for problems. And the fact that it does have that extra parking onsite is, makes it frankly more concerning to me that it gives you opportunity for more cars to be there and more people to be there. And I, I, I just, I'm just not thinking this is, uh, a good fit for the neighborhood. That's it.
Any other comments? Mr. Graham, had your hand up?
Obviously, it's west of Volker Avenue. It's actually about as far as, far west as you can go, the Old Beach area. Um, I, I, uh, share the concern that, uh, a couple of the other commissioners have, have, uh, expressed. I, uh, unless I hear something different, will not be supporting it.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah, uh, I, I don't know, we, you should deny a person who meets all the conditions except for his house is a little bit bigger or he can fit a few more cars on, on, on his parking, uh, program. So I, I'll be voting in favor of it. I mean, it looks like the ideal situation, someone who cares enough and wants to move here eventually. And, uh, looks like, uh, what you would rather see, less rentals, uh, as in he visits often with, uh, family and friends. So, so we'll support it.
Mr. Redman?
Yeah, I'm not sure how anybody could come away with any, uh, sort of confidence in the consistency of what we do if, um, we criticize them for having not enough parking and then criticize them for having too much parking. So, I mean, I, you know, is it, you know, is it too hot? Is it too cold? Is it to somewhere in there, I guess, the, you know, porridge is supposed to be the right temperature. But I, I thought having adequate parking was, um, was supposed to be a good thing. And, um, like Mr. Costin, I think when you check all the boxes and you have, um, uh, you know, ample parking, then, you know, probably you've done, you know, you got something that, that you ought to be rewarded for. So I'm gonna support it as well.
Mr. Inman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, my, my last ditch effort will be to say, uh, what if we were to reduce the occupancy to two bedrooms? Uh, that way, it couldn't be used for that purpose, the short-term rental purpose, when the family is not staying there themselves or having friends visit? Anybody care to support that?
Mrs. Oliver has her hand up. Let's see what she has to say.
Hey, um, as much as I would like to support that, Mike, I don't even know how we would begin to, um, begin to monitor anything like that. And my problem with this is that everything that we've discussed, this is not gonna be part of, um, the B. this is not going to be part of the Beach District overlay. So I'm not quite sure what we want to do with this. But because of that and everything that we've got going forward, I just am not going to be able to support this one. So that's where I am with that, just so everybody knows.
Anybody else? I would like to add something if I could. I know we've been talking about the North Beach overlay, North End overlay. And we don't even know if we're going that direction. So I'm not even keeping that in the back of my mind right a second because I personally don't like it and I'm probably not going to support it. So I'm not even going to go in that direction. But I'm going to go back on what Whitney said. As a commission, being consistent, we, about a year ago, it's been about a year ago, we all, we all made it. Well, we sent it to council, anything west of Baltic in this area that we didn't want short-term rentals. And we sent that to them. We haven't approved one since we sent that to them. And I think that's consistent. If we stay with that, this is in the historic area. And it's, and if you remember, we did that, we sent it to council like that. So I'm going to stick with that, and I'm not going to be able to support this one either. And saying that, any other comments? They might want to make a motion. Mr. Alcaraz, this is your area.
Yeah. Yeah, as I stated, because of the opposition and I think because where we're going for that area, just east of it, and this being in the R5S district, I'm going to go ahead and recommend denial for the application.
Do you have a second? A second? So we have a motion for denial by Mr. Alcaraz and a second by Mr. Graham. Ready for the vote?
If you're in favor of the motion, please say yes. And if you're opposed, say no. The motion is to deny the application. Mr. Alcaraz?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Costin?
No.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Horsley?
No.
Mr. Inman?
Yes.
Ms. Klein?
No.
Mr. Redmond? Mr. Redmond?
I think he said no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
And Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
By recorded vote of six, four, and four against, Agenda Item Number 24 has been recommended for denial.
That is our last item. Everyone, thank you very much. This is a lot easier doing this format. I like this format and I like to thank Bobby and staff for putting this together like this because it's really, it was a lot better. Do we have any new business? The old business, Mr. Tom's raising his hand?
Commissioners, before the end of the week, I'm going to send out dates if you're available for a virtual discussion and workshop on short-term rentals. The dates will be in the next couple of weeks. So we will set that up and we will have a similar forum where it'll just be discussion and no comment from the public.
Sounds good. All right, thank you very much. We are adjourned.